Okay, if everybody take their seats, we can go ahead and begin. Thank you. I'm gonna call to order the Thursday, February 16th, regular meeting of the Cambria Community Services District. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. We have a quorum. All of the directors are here. President's report, I really don't have much to say, other than I do want to thank again all the members of the public who contributed their public input towards our strategic plan. And information for us on what you want to see in the next General Manager. It's very helpful and it was all taken into consideration. The next agenda item is re- let me make sure I didn't miss something. The next agenda item is report from closed session. Mr. Carmel?
Thank you, Madam President. At the February 9th closed session, the board discussed various aspects of the General Manager recruitment. No action was taken.
Okay, we have a public comment on this item from Christine Heinrichs.
There, thank you, and Happy Valentine's Day. The Brown Act, which requires that the public's business be conducted in public, allows closed sessions to be held outside public view for a few narrow subjects: personnel evaluations, labor negotiations, pending litigation, and real estate negotiations. The general posture should be that all business is public with these sensitive exceptions. Please report as to how you construe general discussion of recruiting a General Manager to fall into any of those categories. The board, so far as the public has been informed, is not doing any personnel evaluations, is not yet negotiating contracts with any candidates, is not suing or being sued by any, and no real estate is involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine, Ms. Heinrichs. Okay, agenda review. Is there anything on here that anyone wants to change the order of or remove for a later date? Okay, seeing none. Board member communications. Is there any member of the board that would like to make announcement? Give a brief report on his or her activities or ask a question for clarification. I see Director Farmer has his light up. If you need, move your cup so I can see. Thank you.
Thank you, President Dean. Yes, I'd like to remind folks that coming up a week from this Saturday, which is February 25th, right here at the Veterans Hall, there's going to be a pancake breakfast. And this is a fundraiser for the skate park across the street. So if you're so inclined, from nine to 11:00 on Saturday, February 25th, swing by. It's only $5. And you can dine in down at the American Legion area, or you can just pick up and take it home or take it wherever you wish. So it's for, obviously for a good cause and hope to see you there on hopefully a really nice sunny day. Thank you.
Thank you. There any other board member communications? Seeing none, we're ready for public safety. Do we have a Sheriff's Department report?
Yes, Madam President, members of the board, staff and the public. For January 2023, the Sheriff's Office responded to three assault and battery calls in Cambria. Two of those were domestic violence related, and one was a report of an assault with a deadly weapon. Specifically, someone reported that they were nearly struck by a car on purpose. That particular incident was found determined to be unfounded. We had nine disturbance calls. One was a family disturbance, two were neighborhood or neighbor disputes, and six were general disturbances. There was one theft reported, and that was theft of household items. That was determined to be involved some civil issues and wasn't a clear-cut theft. There was a report of vandalism to a vehicle. There were no mail thefts reported or phone scams reported. Also, there were no burglaries reported. There were four suspicious circumstances reported. Three of those were suspected criminal acts, and one was a suspicious subject. There were 29 enforcement stops conducted by the deputies that work in the Cambria community. Throughout the month, three of those were pedestrian stops, and 26 of those were vehicle stops. And then other preventative patrol activity that the deputies engaged in. There were two-foot patrols, four patrol checks, and 11 onsite contacts and preventative efforts. A couple of notable calls or incidents. On the evening of January 21st, one of our patrol vehicles was involved in a minor property damage-only traffic collision at the intersection of Highway 1 and Highway 46 West. And then on the evening of the 27th of January, we did get several callers from the area of Artith and Burton calling in reports of gunshots heard. Deputies got into the area and also heard what sounded like either gunfire or fireworks. And after a thorough search of the area, bringing in additional deputies to look, no source of those noises nor any victims of any crime were located. And with that, that's my report. So I'm available for questions from the board of the public.
Yeah, I heard those shots too. It definitely sounded like gunshots. Anyway.
And that was an opinion held by the deputy that got into the area. And, you know, we were a little bit more fine-tuned in the differences between gunshots and fireworks. Although, they're both explosions and at times difficult to differentiate.
Thank you. Does anyone on board have any questions, Sir Commandant Donald? Anyone in the public? Thank you very much for your report.
All right, we'll see you next month.
Thank you. Okay, we're ready for the Fire Chiefs report.
Madam President, members of the Board of Directors, thank you for allowing me this opportunity. Just a moment here, we will pull up on the screen the report, but I'll begin with January statistics for residents versus non-residents when it came to EMS calls and transports. Forty-four of the EMS calls were for residents of Cambria in January, and 14 were for non-residents. So visitors to our area. We didn't have any fires luckily in in January. So that's a wonderful thing to report. One of the most alarming stats you'll see is that we had 35 severe weather disasters. So if we all remember back to January, it was a very, very busy time. And that 35 isn't stretched out over the whole month. That was about three, four days of just back-to-back calls. And those are the ones that actually made it to a call, not something that we just took care of and didn't fill a report on. So every one of these, there's a report and a story that goes with it. So for a total of 182 calls in January, totally 100% of our call volume. This month, I am, and kind of like last month, where I'm picking a topic to bring along with the statistics. The statistics can only tell part of the story, and I think for this board to be as informed as it can and should be, and for the public to know exactly where their tax dollars are and how your fire department operates. This month, I've picked firefighter medical training levels to kind of explain, you know, what you're getting here in Cambria. And what you are getting in Cambria is a professional fire department providing advanced life support services, which is very similar to the other metropolitan areas of San Luis Obispo County. So why that's important, a lot of people that maybe didn't grow up here moved here from areas that have a level of service with a three-person fire engine with a paramedic onboard. And when you come to Cambria, you maintain that same level of service you've become accustomed to. And I think that's something I really want to highlight is the level of service you're getting here is the same level of service if you call 911 and you're in Paso Robles, if you're in San Luis Obispo, and a lot of the other metropolitan areas within our county. And I really want to highlight that and give some praise and recognition to the fire crews for their certification and what they do in the community. So as we go to the next slide, we're going to be talking about firefighter medical training levels. There are three different levels. One is public safety first aid, then it goes EMT, and then paramedic. As we go to the following slide, you know, why does the fire department get involved in EMS? That's a question that we get a lot. You know, I called for an ambulance, but there's the fire department here. So by law, Title 22 requires, under the general provisions, that if you are one, a lifeguard, a firefighter, or peace officer, that you are medically trained. And because we are medically trained and available in a community, and typically, we don't generally leave our community very often. We are, as well, we're in ambulance, will have to leave the community to do a transport of a patient. We are an available medical resource trained to a state standard that can be deployed to have a life-saving intervention. So the question is, you know, why the fire department show up? Because we're pretty much guaranteed to be around. And we are required by law to have this medical training. But the level of medical training required, if you go to the next slide, is public safety first aid. So public safety first aid is 21 hours. A prerequisite is 15 years old. And that is American Red Cross, some local county emergency medical service agencies, or police officers. So part of their police academy, they receive this minimum standard of 21 hours of training. Lifeguards, part of their training, they receive that 21 hours. But the standard in California for most professional fire departments is that minimum EMT level or paramedic. So as we go to the next slide, you'll see emergency medical technician. A lot of times, this term gets very confusing. You know, the term EMT can be a paramedic or this level. So for this level, it's 120 to 150 hours of training, plus a field internship time that usually requires either time in a hospital or on an ambulance. And that's just the medical training that's required. And that doesn't include the BLS level CPR that that person would also receive. So the basic life support CPR level. And you have to then take a national test and become nationally accredited and then state accredited. So at this level, you're talking about some accreditation level, and typically, it comes out to be like a semester of college on top of whatever other fire training that is required. As we go to the next slide, we're going to talk about a paramedic. So a paramedic is basically the equivalent of an associate's degree just in pre-hospital medicine. You're looking at 1,200 to 1,800 hours, plus a field internship that usually lasts anywhere from four to six months of working on an ambulance, basically for free as the third person, going through all your skills, doing rotations, and OB, doing deliveries in the hospital, doing rotations in surgery, doing rotations in the ER to get the skill set necessary to make advanced life support interventions in the field. And for that, again, 18 years old, they've also already become an EMT, so they already went through that level of training. So when you start to put all those hours together and you hear about our staff that we have here that have paramedic level certification, these are very qualified individuals that have a lot of accreditation and certification behind their name. So as we go to the next slide, I start to talk about the skill sets. So the skill set between an EMT versus a paramedic. Those are the medications an EMT can do: aspirin, oral glucose, oxygen, glucose, bean sugar, and Narcan. But then when you look down at what our paramedics carry on our fire engine and what their capabilities are, it's very impressive. They are carrying narcotics, they are carrying different life-saving drugs. I'm sure Director Scott, who has a very strong background, will see some of these and realize that this takes a lot of training and understanding and diagnosis in the field to be able to make these medication interventions. And it's, again, a very important thing when you think of how remote we are here to be able to provide this from our fire engine-based services. Next slide. So as we talk about the interventions, we don't take away anything from the EMT. The EMT is the standard basically through the state of California. And they're able to really do the basics and do the basics well. They can do CPR, they can do it well. They can manage an airway and they can do it well. They can do a lot of the basic things to help keep somebody in that same position to do their, to have advanced life support come in and take it to that next level. But the paramedic is going to go even farther. They're going to do emergency crikeyotomies into the throat and past an item. They're going to do needle decompression in the chest. They're going to do some very, very advanced things that can't be done and take a lot of education and training. So our paramedics do have this capability. They carry that gear. They have one of the most important things. We do get a lot of chest pain calls. And as an EMT, all you can do for chest pain is give some aspirin and keep your fingers crossed until a paramedic can arrive if you don't have one on your engine. For us, we have the Zoll monitors, and thank you again for making that strategic investment. Our paramedics have the ability to run a full EKG strip, a full 12 lead, and start to do field diagnosis and be able to do interventions with medication to either catch a stroke or, and start a STEMI process, or identify, oh, you're actually having a heart attack, and start making those interventions so there's not long-term disabilities. So again, our paramedics on our fire engine are critical. And then in our next slide, we'll kind of talk about, you know, again, why is this so important? Because we did run 457 medical calls this last year. So more than once a day, somebody is calling, you know, at least probably about twice a day. We are getting somebody who's having the worst day of their life that's having a medical emergency. And we are providing them, and this board and the CCSD is providing them a high level of service that they would expect to get anywhere else in a metropolitan area. And vehicle accidents even, 28 vehicle accidents. So that's, you know, more than two a month of somebody that may be a resident or may not be a resident that may be used to having a high level of service continues to get that here in Cambria. Again, when you look at the distance to hospitals, this is 23 miles, 28 minutes. That doesn't fully include a windy hill, weather, a deer running across the road, any, anything else. So there is some time distance for us to get to a hospital. Where this is really important is we have a very close working relationship with the healthcare district. And on a critical call, it's always better to have more than one paramedic because you're getting multiple interventions done simultaneously. They may, one may be innovating, but the other one's running an EKG. And in our case, oftentimes, we have two paramedics from the fire engine on scene, and the other one's starting an IV, and those things are all happening at the same time, giving somebody the best chance of survival. And we'll send our paramedic in the ambulance to be an extra set of hands and to keep those interventions going. So it's an amazing teamwork, especially when you see these response times to get to a hospital. Next. So levels of EMS service across Slano County Fire Agency. So how do we compare? You know, one of the best ways to understand how you're doing is to compare yourself to either what's around you and standards. And I think we compare very well. When you look across Slano County, the ALS fire service providers include Cambria, Paso Robles, Morro Bay, Atascadero, San Luis Obispo City, Los Osos, Mesa, Nopomo, which is through a CAL FIRE contract. So CAL FIRE does have some stations that they do provide that ALS level of service through their county fire contract. The BLS service providers, which means they don't provide a paramedic, their paramedic is provided from San Luis Ambulance, is going to be the other CAL FIRE stations, San Miguel, Templeton, Santa Margarita, Pismo Beach, Oceano, or Royal Grande, Rover Beach. And then there's even some that do still utilize the public safety first aid. And that's more of like the San Miguel or Santa Margarita where they're, they have more volunteers that don't have maybe the time to go through that level of training. So I would say we're in a very good position when you compare our level of service and what we're providing to our community, and why it's important to have that when we have such a distance to the hospital. So let's just talk Cambria specific. We have a lot of public safety agencies here. You may not realize it, but this list actually kind of lays out all the different overlapping jurisdiction that happens here in Cambria. So your county lifeguards at Shammel Park, those are going to be public safety first aid. All of your CHP along Highway 1, public safety first aid. All the park rangers are going to be a public safety first aid. Your sheriff's department is again, public safety first aid. CAL FIRE, they're all typically EMT here. Every once in a while, though, when they are gone and a backfill comes in from maybe another county, they, all the CAL FIRE in San Luis Obispo County is striving for EMTs with their seasonals. But the seasonals from other counties may not be at EMT level. So depending on what the backfill engine is through fire season, it may come down to public safety first aid. But in general, you're going to get BLS EMT service. There are times where we'll get an overtime worker at one of the, that is a paramedic working over here, but they don't have the gear, so they don't get to operate in that fashion. But they are extremely critical in our responses. So in some parts of our town, if they're closer, we'll always send the closest unit to at least get there and start CPR. And so they're critical on those calls while they're get there and they'll start the CPR until we can get there and do that advanced life support. And we take over from that point. So we love our wonderful working relationship with CAL FIRE, and it really works out good. Cambria Healthcare District obviously has paramedics and EMTs, and we have paramedics and EMTs. So the last slide here goes into, you know, your fire department. If you look there, we have a good majority of our, especially our full-time staff up top, are almost all paramedic level certified. And then our reserves are EMT. But we were able to pretty much produce two paramedics, sometimes three paramedics on a fire engine at any time. And again, when you start to look at all of those medications and you look at all of those interventions, we're not doing one at a time. We're doing all three at once, which is saving minutes. And when minutes matter, that's where saving lives. And so I really wanted to just bring this forward and give a little bit of education because it's a common question I get. Why does the fire department respond? Well, we're required to. And what are we bringing to the table? We're bringing paramedic level service, which is incredibly important with our location out here. And truly, I think it's the service that most people think that they're getting and that they're accustomed to. And we, the CCSD is doing an amazing job of supporting that. So on behalf of the fire department, one, I want to say thank you to the board for continuing to support our capabilities. And two, to the community, I hope all of you are reassured that you have the fire department that you thought you had. And you do. You have an excellent fire department with excellent EMS capabilities. So thank you.
Thank you. And I've been the recipient of the care of the fire department and our local ambulance service in the past, and I do appreciate them being here. I do have a question. There's a long list of drugs here under paramedic. Are those things that are taken out on every call?
Yes. So we have those with us on every single call. They're on the fire engine. And the narcotics are locked in a lockbox that only that paramedic has access to for that shift. And we go through narcotics control through the government to make sure that what isn't used is wasted appropriately. And we also work pretty closely with the ambulance in making sure that we have stock, they have stock, back and forth.
Thank you. I think Vice President Gray has a question.
Yeah, I think President Dean, yeah, thank you for that very thorough report. It's very informative. Just a small question about the chart on page 30. And wait. It's about the levels of EMS service across Slow County Fire Agencies. Under San Luis Obispo County Fire Department, parentheses, CAL FIRE contract, there's a couple of asterisks after paramedic. And I don't know if it's a complicated explanation, but I
Oh, no.
I'm wondering what those meant.
No, so, yeah, absolutely. So there are some county stations that provide, and that's going to be the one in Los Osos and Mesa and Nopomo do provide, and that's what the asterisk is talking about.
Okay.
Because those don't have, Los Osos doesn't have its own fire department. Mesa doesn't, neither does Nopomo. They contract through the county. And those ones, they pay to contract to have a paramedic there. So those ones will have it.
Thank you.
Can you, Director Scott?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Very interesting. I wanted to ask these questions, and now you've answered most of them. So the main difference, no. A very important difference that I believe is that EMTs can't do IV access.
That is true.
And that's really important for a lot of different reasons.
Absolutely.
Looking at that.
And the EKG. They can't do heart monitor.
They can't even do the EKG.
Wow. They can assist in setting up the 12 lead, but they are not trained to actually to be able to read and interpret an ECG.
Okay. So Cambria Ambulance Service, how many EMTs and paramedics do they have?
So each ambulance is going to be staffed typically unless there's some overtime issue with one EMT and one paramedic. And they're running two ambulances 24 hours a day. That's the goal, unless something weird happens. But they're typically running two ambulances 24 hours a day. So they'll have two paramedics and two EMTs on, split up between two ambulances.
Okay. And then what's the cost for paramedic training?
The cost for paramedic training varies depending on where they go. So we don't send our people to paramedic training. We already hire them trained as paramedics. And I believe Quest College is running about 4,000 to 5,000 just in the tuition books and fees. And then they're going to be paying whatever fire department or ambulance, typically an ambulance, for their internship time. Hospitals, usually, I don't believe there's an internship cost. But as far as the ambulance side, there's typically a cost that they're going to pay to that paramedic field training officer that's going to be paying for them. So all in all, I would say you're looking anywhere between $8,000 and $20,000 depending on what program and where it's at and how accelerated the program is.
And then and then the other question would be have you always hired all of the paramedics? You have never had one trained?
So we haven't always been paramedic level. Within the last 10 years is when we switched to that advanced life support. And we do prioritize that. So our last safer firefighter was hired as a paramedic. He's actually, hasn't been sworn in yet, but you'll see him in the back there as Drew. So he's our newest safer firefighter paramedic. And what's very interesting is, I would say, half our staff has probably worked for the healthcare district as a paramedic there or currently still work part-time on their days off with San Luis Ambulance as paramedics to keep up on that skill set in a busier system. So it's really a value to us.
So EMTs and paramedics are pre-hospital only?
Typically are pre-hospital only. Typically. I've seen it during COVID. I myself deployed to a hospital, UCLA, for 30 days when they ran out of nurses. So I've seen them used in hospital settings, but typically, we are pre-hospital care.
California law says that they can only be pre-hospital. Is that true?
I believe so, except for the COVID exemption, in which
There was an exemption.
There was an exemption during COVID in which they were working as respiratory therapists because of their ability to intubate patients and working as basically almost LVM's because of a shortage in nurses.
Through the delegation of nursing tasks.
I'm sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Director Thomas?
Thank you, President Dean, and just kudos. This is the second in your learning series, and I honestly look forward to hearing what you're going to present next month and the month after that. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Yeah, just a brief, next month, I plan to talk about ISO, which is the insurance ratings for fire departments as a very hot topic in our community is the high severity hazard zone that has now been placed over by CAL FIRE in the state of California, and how that's affecting insurance, and people either keeping it or their insurance rates are going up. And that's one part of homeowner's insurance. The other part is your fire department's rating. And so I'll be discussing that. fire department's rating. And so I'll be discussing that as that I'm sure will be very important to the board as well as to the public in March's meeting.
Director Farmer?
Thank you, President Dean, and thank you, Chief Vincent. It's a pleasure not only to get this report, but to see your ability to respond quickly to questions with answers that are understandable. So thank you so much. So I just wanted a little bit of clarification on page 14, where it says levels of EMS service, you know, across the county here. And it says ALS Fire Services and BLS. So those initials right there, what do they stand for?
Yes, ALS stands for Advanced Life Support and BLS stands for Basic Life Support. So ALS is going to be synonymous with paramedic and BLS is synonymous with EMT level.
Right, thank you.
There you go.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
So the people who have the first aid, what is it called? What was that called?
Public Safety First Aid.
Safety First Aid. They, they could be BLS too.
Technically, yes. And that's actually kind of county by county for how they want to define that. But technically, yes. Yeah, there, there's different counties will have a different, so some counties, though, you'll get what's called a first responder. And that's actually a level and synonymous with public safety first aid and they'll consider that BLS. But yeah, basically anything without a paramedic is going to be BLS in, in the grand scheme of things.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do any members of the public have any questions of the fire chief? Thank you, Chief Vincent. It's wonderful to have a fire chief that can explain everything so well to all of us. We can understand. Thank you. Next is public comment on items not on the agenda, but under the jurisdiction of this board. And I don't see any public comment. Do you have written public comment?
I do. I have two to read.
Okay.
The first one is from Michael Lyons. And it states, during the last regular CCSD meeting held February 9th, 2023, I listened to several comments by members of the public on the topic of a potential test run of a technology that might reduce the need for trucking the liquid effluent discharge from operations of our WRF. It is well known that hauling brine is one of the most expensive aspects of our marvelous water security system. There are also some undesirable environmental issues as a consequence of transport of the unusable concentrated brine. These issues have contributed to a long delaying county and state permitting of the water reclamation system. It seems only reasonable to me that it is wise to examine this and any other potential solution in a level-headed logical manner. Under the guise of reminding the CCSD to be sure to coordinate with all regulators before entering into any move towards such a test, those public comments struck me as a concerted effort against even a no-cost, low-impact trial run. Our CCSD board and district engineers have for years and years been coordinating with county, regional and state agencies in every single phase of the WRF's existence, from concept to building to testing to maintenance. Just why would our district deviate from their well-known obligation to consult on this proposal? The admonishments I heard struck me as a red herring. I sense yet another no-growth agenda at work here. Thank you, Michael Lyons.
Thank you. And you have another one?
Yes. The second comment is from Cheryl McDowell. And it states, hello, board. I have a few concerns after hearing this week's RNI committee meeting regarding zero liquid discharge. Why is the district engineer so gung ho on pursuing this technology? Technology and partnering with the Global Water Innovations for a 10-day pilot. According to Google, there's many companies who do this technology. Why is this startup company? Mr. Clark Easter referred numerous times this pilot project will be free. There are no free lunches. This 10-day proposed running of EWS will be an expense to the district and ultimately cost rate pairs just by drawing down the well level, utilities, staff and miscellaneous hidden costs such as permits. I ask you, the board, to be wise in opening your decision-making. What is the real reason for this pilot project based on a system that hasn't produced water only for two tracer testings? This pilot project is not priority put into bed. CCSD is not a site partner with Global Water Innovations. Let's move on. Focus on completion of projects at hand and hiring a general manager. Thank you, Cheryl McDowell.
Thank you. Is that all the public comment?
That is all I have.
Okay, thank you. So we're going, there's no one in the audience that wishes to speak? Okay, moving on to the general managers' report.
Thank you, President Dean. So for the president or for the general manager's report, I want to highlight a couple of things there. I, I want to announce our new program manager, Megan Gersony. She is, was the most qualified candidate from an internal recruitment. Both her education and her, and her experience makes her well-qualified for the position. She has both a bachelor's and a master's degrees in archaeology. And she also trained under Melissa for, for two years doing program manager type roles, even as she was an admin tech during that time. So I want to welcome Megan. So glad to have her officially on board as our program manager. The other thing I wanted to, to mention, to highlight is I wanted to congratulate our own fire engineer, Kayla Graves, because she was recognized by the Cal Fire Directors for her participation in Camp Cinder. And Camp Cinder is a camp for young women between ages 16 to 18 years old, where they are provided hands-on introduction into the fire service. And what, what, what made me particularly happy about this is to highlight that we have staff here in our fire, in our fire department that not only approached their career and their job as, as a job, which they do excellently, but they also approach it as a vocation, is something that really matters to society and something that's worth passing on. So I wanted to, to highlight that and give special kudos to Kayla Graves for that. So please pass my congratulations. So. And also I wanted to, to, to mention that we, we had the privilege, President Dean and Tom Gray and I were able to attend the CSDA lunch and CSDA is the California, the community or the California Special Districts Association, which Cambria is a part of. And to honor, to honor Senator John Laird as State Legislator of the Year. And I, I wanted to, to highlight this because I wanted to let everyone be reminded that we have legislatures here in our, in our own district that represent us that really care about special districts and the needs of special districts. I was really, I was really privileged to, to witness that. And, and having met Senator Laird a couple of times, I, I can testify that to be true. And I also wanted to, to make mention that we were able to participate in a really good roundtable discussion where we talked about issues with, with the floods and issues with, with the fire season coming up. And I was also able to follow up at the meeting with staff from both Senator Laird and State Assembly, Don Addis's office about emergency access issues, flooding issues that are pertinent to our area. So. So those are the things that I wanted to highlight in my general manager's report. And again, I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have a question for, oh, I don't know. Is your light on? Okay. Director Thomas?
Thank you, President Dean. And again, kudos. Great to see promoting from within. Great to see Megan taking that position. So that's great to hear. And I meant to say earlier, it's great to see the fire department staff attending these meetings. I'm not sure if the members of the public that are viewing from Zoom know, but this is either the second or third time that the fire department on staff is, is here, present, tuning in. And this, that makes this the safest place in Cambria. And it's great to see y'all plugged in. So fantastic.
Thank you. And if any of the other directors have a question or a comment, does anybody from the public wish to make a comment on the general managers' report? Seeing none, Mr. Carlos Mendoza with the Facilities and Resources Report.
Good afternoon, everybody. Appreciate the time and the opportunity to provide a report. Let me start my report and I'll share my screen. So I'm going to do something a little different this time around. I'm going to go through my report a little quick. And then I'm, I've got a little bit of a treat today to sort of give you a little insight on some of the tree work that we did. So I have a couple of video shots of that and I'll share those with you later on. So as my report, as you can see on my report, mostly it's based on the storm-related issues that we had in the month of January. We had several storm issues that came our way. And we had quite a few trees that fell on the Fiscalini Ranch. We had trees that affected our trails that affected our neighbors. In total, we had about 80 trees that came down on the Fiscalini Ranch. That's both in the storms of December and January. During the January storms, we had the forest trails, all of them closed for several days due to all of these trees that came down. But our facilities team worked very hard for days to bring down all these trees to remove some of the broken branches from trees to clear trails and to clear all those hazards. So we were able to get these trails reopened fairly quickly within a few days after they were closed and we were able to, to get all that stuff done. We also had a pretty significant landslide that happened on the east ranch. And you can see from, from the screen there, we have an aerial view and a ground view of that landslide. It brought down about half a dozen trees and a lot of mud and debris down to the rodeo grounds area. We also had issues with flooding on our trails. As you can see in the pictures here, a lot of it had to do with the water that came down on our trails. So at this point, the Santa Rosa Creek Trail is still closed to the public. We are working on a plan to clean off the debris from the creek, but also to fix some of the erosion issues that happened on that trail. We had a lot of flooding on our trails. As you can see in the middle picture, there's the east ranch trail that basically became a small lagoon there. And I wanted to take the opportunity to thank our volunteers. We have great volunteers, especially Brian Morgan, who's our leader of our trails. Typically, when we have this much water, we have maybe about five or six trails that we close just about every year. And it takes a couple of months for these trails to get reopened because of all the water that's in there. Our volunteers were out there after all these storms and they were working hard in mud, trying to get all this water out of these trails. Because of that hard work, these trails were only closed a few weeks and then we reopened them up. So want to take the opportunity to thank our volunteers and Brian Morgan in particular for his hard work. The picture on the right-hand side is the emergency road, the Marine Terrace Trail. The fire chief obviously opened up the, the road as the Windsor Street was flooded and we used that trail. But I wanted to highlight one thing about that trail is it was improved about 10 years ago to be used as an emergency road. Since then, we've had major storms that have gone, that have come. And because of the heavy water that's gone through there, we now have some deep ruts, some big potholes. And it's become a little bit of hard to drive through that trail. The other issue that we have there, it's an ADA accessible trail. And so our ADA visitors that come to the ranch are having a hard time utilizing that trail. So we are working on a plan here in the next month in March to close that trail off in sections and fix that trail so that it's easier for the public to use. I don't want to create any panic. It's still usable as an emergency road. We just got to do a little bit of work to fix it. And we also had some issues with open space properties. So as you all know, we have a lot of open space properties, a lot of lots throughout town. We were responding to our trees falling on streets, our trees falling on some properties behind somebody's home and also trees endangering homes. So that was also part of our response during that, these storm events. We had some significant flooding here at the Vetsol, at rodeo grounds. Fortunately, the American Legion said they didn't have very much of any water damage to the bar or the kitchen, which is really good news. But we did have a lot of mud that settled on the parking lot. And so we closed the parking lot off for a couple of weeks. Once it was dry enough, we picked up all the mud, loaded it up, hauled it away and pressure washed the back to make it usable for the public. So I'll stop there with my report before I jump into some short clips of videos. But I wanted to take one moment just to thank my staff for all the work that they did last month. So not only did they work extremely hard with all these trees, but they came overtime, they stayed a couple of days here in town. But on top of that, which I don't mention here, and I mentioned it last month in my report, along with all this work, we were dealing with a fairly large homeless encampment cleanup at the same time. And so all of that work, we were able to get accomplished. And I just wanted to acknowledge my staff for all their hard work. So before I start on the, on the video clips, I'll start off with this. We, my staff and I, we understand that we're really lucky and blessed to be able to work and care for the places that we care for. Fiscalini Ranch, open spaces, parks. And there's a sense of responsibility when we care for those places. We have to be good stewards of those very valuable assets that the community has. And so when you have over 100 trees that come down, there are some challenges that comes with that. And I'll share you, share with you and the public just one challenge that we had so that you sort of get a feeling of what we're thinking and our mental approach towards these, these challenges. So on the screen, we have a tree that uprooted. And you can see that this tree has uprooted and it's actually leaning on another tree. Well, the issue with this tree is that it's actually leaning over a viewing site on the Fiscalini Ranch. And if you happen to have been to this site, you know where it is. It's actually the Butterfly Grove on the west part of the Fiscalini Ranch. Last year, November, our partners at Circes came out and they actually marked all the trees where the butterflies were clustering. Well, all of the clustering is happening on the left-hand side where that tree is actually leaning towards. So we have a, quite a bit of an issue there, not only with safety, but also the butterflies on the left-hand side that we're trying to care for. As we all know, they're having some, some hard, hard years. So one of the, one of the things that we typically do with a tree like this is we try to do what is called a control fall. And that is where you cut it in a way that it causes the least amount of damage. So one of the ways that we do is if we have the ability, we can actually make a cut on the tree that allows the tree to come down in a very slow, slow way, as you can see on the picture there. Or we can actually cut a portion of the tree from the front and backcut it. And with wedges, we can actually move the tree so that it causes the least amount of damage, which is what you see on the next picture here with this very large tree that has fallen in that section.
Lost the picture?
We lost some. We got it. Thank you. So having said that, we, because of what I mentioned before, I met with Kitty Connolly on site of this tree. And we discussed, you know, different methods that we were gonna use to bring this tree down. Obviously, the method that I just showed you wasn't an acceptable method because we have all these butterflies on the opposite side. And one of the things that we've been advised by the Cirques Society is the importance of even having branches being broken off. There's a need for these butterflies to have wind protection. And so the decision that we came up with is to actually put this tree up in the air, bring it down slowly and have all the work happen just within that trail and when, within that viewing site. Now, how does that happen? So I'll show you what we actually ended up doing with the, with this tree. And I think I'm missing a picture on the left hand side up there. So one of the things that we ended up doing is sending up a I think I'm missing a picture up there still. We ended up sending up a climber to the top of the tree and rigging up the tree that was leaning up against the other tree. And then once the tree was secured, we're having issues up there. I think the screen froze up there. Oh, there it is. So as you can see on the left, left picture there, we have a climber that actually climbed the top of that tree. And once the climber went up to the top of the tree, we secure that tree to stop it from falling on the left hand side. And once that's secured, then we ended up actually taking the, the tree off the and then brought in our mini skid steer, tied the mini skid steer to that tree and started to looks like there's some issues there with that. There we go. I think it's actually working now. Looks like it's slowly working there. But in the video here, you can see us actually roping the bottom of that tree, bringing it over to the trail and actually putting it up in the air. And you can see us slowly bringing that tree down. Once it's rigged down to the bottom and slowly laying it down on the ground, all working within that footprint of that trail and that, that viewing site there. So again, it's just showing an example of trying to be good stewards to, to those properties that we care for and going that extra mile to not do any additional harm. I'll leave my report at that and I'm, I'll share, I'll stop sharing my screen. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mendoza. Great report. I'm curious who climbed the tree. Was it you or one of your crew?
So we are smart enough to understand our limits and we know our partners. And so we had a climber actually go up there. That's professional to, to rig that for us.
That's, that's good. And we don't want to lose any of you. Anyone, actually, does anyone on the board have a, oh, I see Vice President Gray.
Yeah, thank you, President Dean. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mendoza. A great report. A couple of questions. One is related to one of your slides about the open space properties. You know, about ten trees went down. I was, I, I know that the Fiscalini Ranch Preserve is, is in line or is part of this process under CAL FIRE grant to get a forest management plan and then to have vegetation treatment program, CAL BTP, conducted there ultimately. Is anything being contemplated or possible for all these forested lots that we have? Cause obviously some of them were, were problematic with the strain, with the trees down and everything. Do something similar where you could get a management plan, inventory of them and then get on the, the same program that the, if, that the ranch preserve is, is moving toward.
Yeah, I think that's the discussion that is being had to not only do the ranch, but also these open space properties in particular, Fern Canyon, which is in, in, in need for, for some of that work. So yeah, that is under discussion.
Yes. And another question I have is off the subject of, of the weather and everything. But I was wondering if we, if you've gotten any sort of sense that the lease law, lease ordinance is having an effect or is being observed more widely? I, I just, my own impression, I get, I get the sense that it's, people are very, are following it pretty carefully, pretty punctiliously down the bluff, obviously. And then, and then on the fire road, the escape road up on the ridge trail, it seems pretty wide open still. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, that's a very good question. So we just installed the signs on all of the trailheads advising everybody about the new, new rules. And Kitty Connolly at the FFRP has been doing a fantastic job of getting the word out of these new rules. I have noticed that it is working to a degree. We have a lot of people that are abiding by the rules. And we have seen a change. And I think what we, we were sort of hoping, and I think it has been happening, is that because people take so much ownership of the ranch, people will let other people know if they're breaking the rules. And so I think that's sort of what's been happening on the ranch. People have been sort of advising others, hey, there's a new rule. I think it's a little early to tell if it's going to have that impact that we're looking for. I think when we come to summertime and we have a bigger influx of visitors, that's when we'll know if it's working or not. So I will certainly advise you in the coming months on that progress.
Thank you. Thank you. And I guess the follow up question is you're not, not in the, not in the near future, Lee, you're not gonna go out there on your, on your gator and talk to people or anything necessarily about it. You're, you're not gonna do it like direct enforcement at this point.
So we're not policing people out there. We're not gonna harass people, obviously, if, if, if dogs are out there. You know, running loose, we'll certainly talk to the, to the folks there and let them know about the rules and point out that, hey, new rules are, are, are in place.
Thank you.
Director Farmer.
Just thank you, President Dean. Yes, Carlos, I just wanted to ask you with regard to the trees that fell on the, you know, open space properties. Did any of your crew and you get any positive feedback from members of the community that saw you out there doing this work?
So we, yeah, so when we, some of these open space properties, we were notified by the neighbors of concerns that they have, whether a tree is about to fall or a tree's fallen. They're very thankful of our fast response. And usually we go the extra mile of being good neighbors in whatever way we can. We had a particular incident where, you know, as I showed on the picture, a tree fell from our property onto a neighbor's home to the backyard. It didn't do any damage to their home, but being a good neighbor, not only did we remove the tree from our side, but we went on their property and actually removed part of our tree from their property. Just, you know, those sort of things of being a good neighbor, especially to these folks that we, that were elderly, taking that burden off of them is something that we do. And, you know, we, we got a lot of appreciation from them.
Well, thank you, Carlos. I just wanted to mention because you, you've been acknowledging your crew in Alberto and Martin. But I think folks need to know that you are also out there often doing overtime to address these issues. So you're just not always here in a suit and tie. You're out there in the field doing the work too.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment? I do not. Not. Does anybody in the audience wish to speak? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mendoza. Okay, we have the, let me ask the, the rest of the directors a question here real quick. We have a battalion chief from CAL FIRE here that's waiting to talk about agenda item seven B with the chief. Does anyone mind if once we finish the manager's report, we move agenda item seven B up? So Mr., so Battalion Chief Provence doesn't have to wait here all afternoon?
I'm calling it down right now.
Is everyone else okay with that? Okay, um, we're gonna go ahead and take agenda item seven B then, so Mr. Provence can get back to work. Chief Provence, I'm sorry. Called you Mr. Provence.
Can I introduce it?
Yes, you can introduce it.
So item seven B is this, is discussion and consideration of fire department, fire engine purchase and financing options. I want to clarify that what we're asking of the board today is, 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 we, we, there was a justification change from a type three to a type five. This is why it's before you. Because in the budget that was approved for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three, this purchase was approved for a type three. And also the, the purchase option of, of a loan was also approved by the board at that time as well. So what we're asking here is the, the direction to, to consider the purchasing option of a type three to a type five. And also, we're also asking the board to consider the purchasing options for us to move forward with the purchase. So that's the, that's the direction that we're requesting.
Thank you. Chief Fenton.
Absolutely. I, I had some background I wanted to give, so bear with me as I'm not looking at you as I read. But I did want to give some background and context. So Madam President, members of the Board of Directors, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to discuss the importance of this purchase request. And hopeful, and hopefully I am able to provide you with the necessary context as we address this agenda item. In June of twenty twenty two, the CSD Board voted to adopt fiscal budget year, this fiscal budget year, which included the acquisition of a wildland fire apparatus at the cost of four hundred and fifty thousand. This was all done prior to my appointment as the fire chief in November of twenty twenty two. To understand where the need for this apparatus arose, I'd like to refer back to CCSD's adopted hazard mitigation plan. The multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan for Cambria Community Service District, which was completed and adopted by the CSD in twenty seventeen and submitted to FEMA and the County of San Luis Obispo, has classified wildfires as being very high in severity and have high probability. Some of the listed partners in the development of this mitigation plan, its goals and its objectives includes members from the CCSD Board, Cambria Forest Committee, CAL FIRE, CSD Fire Department, CERT, Slow County Planning Commission, Board of Supervisors, Cambria Fire Safe Focus, Friends of Fiscalini Ranch, and the Slow County Office of Emergency Services. Under the mitigation strategy section of the plan, the board adopted specific goals and objectives to mitigate this risk. Goal number three was to support, build and support local capacity and commitment to minimize the district's vulnerability to potentially naturally occurring hazards with objective, objective three point one stating improve existing capabilities of the CCSD staff to manage emergency situations. The real important one is goal number five, minimize the level of damage and losses to people existing and future critical facilities and infrastructure due to wildland fires. The following mitigation actions for this goal are listed in the Hazard Mitigation Plan as such. Mitigation Action five point two B, replace an existing type three water tender, which has reached the end of its service life. And most importantly, mitigation action five point two C, purchase a type six fire engine in parentheses brush unit so as better provide initial response to wildfires in the district. This was created by the CCSD. This was adopted by the CCSD. This was submitted to the county and submitted to FEMA as our plan to mitigate our very real risks six years ago. CAL FIRE is a great asset and partner when it comes to community safety. In meeting with CAL FIRE yesterday, they gave full support to the need for Cambria to acquire this wildland capable fire apparatus as soon as possible. CAL FIRE's mission is a statewide wildfire response. The CAL FIRE station that is located in Cambria is not a San Luis County Fire Department station, but rather a state of California station to serve its statewide mission. During non-fire season, the County of San Luis Obispo supplements the cost of staffing that station with one full-time fire captain and two seasonal firefighters to provide fire service to the unincorporated areas that surround Cambria. Their mission is not to be dedicated to Cambria. As the Cambria CSD Fire Department is responsible for fire protection in Cambria. We are the primary as, and CAL FIRE is our assisting in Cambria when it comes to the homes and the people. CAL FIRE Station located in Cambria has jurisdiction of everything north of Cambria to the county line, including Ragged Point, San Simeon, Big Sur and Hurst Castle. Their jurisdiction here at Station Ten goes all the way south to Harmony and the top of the grade at forty six and thousands of acres east of Cambria. The Cambria CSD Fire Department's jurisdiction is very specific to only covering Cambria proper. Any response outside that area is done via mutual aid and agreements between both agencies. CAL FIRE and Cambria CSD Fire Department enjoy a strong working relationship. We work extremely well together on all fires, on all calls, even medicals. With our remote location, the response time for resources from other stations is greatly extended. In the case of a wildland fire, the next wildland capable fire engine is coming from either Cayucus, San Luis Obispo or Paso Robles with only three people on board. If, if it is not already dedicated to another emergency anywhere in the county or is mechanically in service. These scenarios are not hypothetical. This is a very real scenario which does happen here in San Luis Obispo County. And I'd like to refer to last year, January twenty seventh, twenty twenty two. Incident one, three, nine, four. The Cambria CSD Fire Department, along with CAL FIRE, were dispatched to a wildland fire on Cobell Ranch. The Cambria CSD Fire Department's type one structure fire engine, which is called Medic Engine fifty seven ninety two, was the first apparatus on scene and reported smoke coming from a grove of trees approximately two miles into Cobell Ranch. Medic Engine fifty seven ninety two got stuck in the mud on the dirt road leading to the fire scene and was unable to make access. At this point, our staff was picked up on a side by side ATV owned by the property owner. And they were given a ride to the fire with no apparatus, no hose and no water. On this day, Cambria's CAL FIRE Station's wildland fire engine was out of service with mechanical issues. The report states verbatim, approximately twenty minutes after on scene, a fire crew from Station Ten arrived in a utility truck and assisted with line construction. Approximately forty minutes after on scene, a fire crew from CAL FIRE Engine sixteen made access with an engine and worked a progressive hose lay all the way around the starting on the right flank. I don't read this to put anybody down, including us who got stuck. I read this to bring context to, these aren't hypotheticals. We do not have any off-road capability. And mechanical problems happen, which is why you keep hearing me say why we need two of everything. We can't afford to fail. This could have been a very, very bad situation if it was not January of, of twenty twenty two and could have been August of twenty twenty two. Response times do matter. So the CCSD has to call, had to call for a tow truck and paid thousands of dollars to tow out our type one structure fire engine. Beyond the cost of the tow and the extreme safety hazard that was created, because if this fire was in the summer months with drier conditions or was wind driven, our firefighters could have been trapped on a dirt road with no way out since our structural firefighting engine that we had to take is not four wheel drive. CAL FIRE Station Ten in Cambria currently staffs one type three wildland fire engine. That means that for any wildfire in Cambria, there is potentially only one fire engine capable of accessing and battling a wildland fire. The next wildland fire engine is at minimum twenty to forty five minutes away. If they're available. Due to Cambria's remote location, distance from mutual aid fire stations, topography, wildfire risk profile and limited firefighting staff on duty, it is imperative that we have the ability to quickly access a wildland fire and extinguish it while it's still small and manageable versus letting it grow till adequate CAL FIRE resources can come from Paso Robles, San Luis Obispo, Cayucus, to try to get it under San Luis Obispo, Cayucus, to try to get it under control. Cambria has been listed by the State of California as residing in the highest level of wildland severity and is classified by the state as very high risk. As stated before, wildfire was listed as a severe risk in the Cambria Hazard Mitigation Plan, which specifically states a mitigation effort of acquiring a wildland fire apparatus for the CCS, uh, by the CCSD all the way back in twenty-seventeen. Lastly, with Cambria being classified in the highest risk for wildland fires in the state, it won't be long till insurance companies take notice that Cambria CSD Fire Department does not list any wildland fire apparatus as part of its insurance ISO rating for the community, risking a loss of insurance for the community members. It is extremely important that the Cambria CSD Fire Department, who is the primary fire department and authority having jurisdiction in Cambria, be capable of battling a wildland fire in Cambria. CSD owns hundreds of acres of open space, Fiscalini Ranch, and with no capability to access it or extinguish a wildland fire. With this knowledge and background, please carefully consider this purchase to protect Cambria and its firefighters from extreme loss of life and property.
Thank you. Anybody? Okay, I see that, um, the, um, fire engine that you first mentioned, the type three, if it were fully equipped, would have been well up above seven hundred thousand dollars. And this particular one that you were saying we need instead of that comes fully equipped with about, for about the same price as what we already budgeted. And I did talk to, um, Battalion Chief Provence yesterday, and he explained quite a bit of the differences between those two vehicles, if you'd like him to, uh...
Yeah, honestly, Cal Fire are the experts in wildland firefighting, the best in the world. Uh, and I don't say that because he's standing in front of me, that this is what they do best is, is wildland firefighting. They've invented how the rest of the world does it. So I think I absolutely referring to him when it comes to the type of fire engine that we're requesting, the cost of a type three fire engine and how this would work well for us here.
Okay, Battalion Chief Provence?
Yeah, so I'm Paul Providence. I'm the Battalion Chief for the North Coast. I work out of San Luis Obispo Unit, uh, on the Cal Fire side of the house and also represent San Luis Obispo County Fire and Los Osos Community Service District. And, um, obviously out here on the North Coast, we have a unique situation out here in that, it's kind of a cul-de-sac. And when we think in terms of firefighting, we think of reflex time. Reflex time is really important to us, and a- as the chief was talking about with his, with EMS calls and having paramedics on scene. Reflex time is everything. Reflex time being the time that you think about it happening to the time it's actually happening, works being done. So, the thought process behind having more ability to, um, contain a fire when it's small. Cal Fire's mission is ninety percent, ten acres or less, um, all the time. And that's why we have our large aircraft firefighting force. That's why we have our engines strategically placed. That being said, um, having our cooperators is really, really important to us. And the fire that we had in January was a good example. While that wasn't our peak fire season, we weren't peak staffed. Uh, we were in what we call our Amador Staffing, which is, uh, when we're on a county fire mission here in Cambria. We're not necessarily on the state mission anymore, however, we're available for state mission responses. Cambria is unique in that, um, in San Luis Obispo County, we have San Luis Obispo County that's administered by Cal Fire. And then we also have, um, our SRA or State Responsible Lands that we're, that we're having to deal with. Cambria Service District overlaps the SRA, which is the watershed, which is what Crowfired's primary mission was upon its founding. We've since grown outside of that, and now we have all our contracting agencies that we work with, like San Luis Obispo County and Los Osos. So as that goes, that unit is available for the entire county to use, for the entire state to use. The type three fire apparatuses, as time has gone on and emission standards and, and manufacturers have done different things with their apparatus, they've grown taller and taller to meet the emission standards of, of, uh, DOT. And so as those apparatus grow, the challenges become a little bit more exponential in access to those things. The fire engine that we have here, uh, related back to, um, Southwest Airlines model of going to a seven thirty-seven. Seven thirty-seven, they only have to buy one set of parts, or their mechanics are all familiar with that. Cal Fire used to build its own fire apparatus in Davis. And at one point, we decided that we were gonna go ahead and start building our own, own specification that matched everything so that if I'm in Siskiyou County, I can get parts. Uh, and my mechanics in Siskiyou County know how to work out on my engine out of San Luis Obispo County. So it's a little more efficient business model for us to, to work. Uh, each iteration of what we call the Model Thirty-four has a letter designation to it. We are up to the iteration of, I believe it's, uh, the I model now as they progress. So, and as they're progressing, they're getting a little bit wider, they're getting a little bit taller. Uh, we now carry pole saws on all of our engines in order to, uh, provide ourselves access. Um, some of those challenges that, that we have with the type one apparatus on the county side of the, of our fire department, we also have with our type threes on the state side, which is access, the low-hanging trees and that type of stuff. So the county fire department, the San Luis Obispo County Fire Department, has made a decision and recognized that, uh, the use of smaller type lighter vehicles is appropriate to give us access to things. And it's a very common practice in other fire departments, other Cal Fire units that operate county fire departments to have smaller apparatus like that. Um, what I would equate this particular scenario to is, um, if your type one apparatus responds to a call and we're out and it's gonna take us a couple more minutes to get there than it normally would, with something that they can gain access, your department can gain access to that incident. They're gonna be able to help us with that ten acres or less mission right away. Right? And then as we're able to infill and we're able to get there, we can help surge that force. Potentially, your type one apparatus cannot make access, and now I have three of your personnel sitting on the side of the road with nothing to do because they don't have the appropriate equipment. Where if the type three is in quarters and you have some sort of lighter vehicle, we can put six people to work right away and potentially keep that fire from ever getting into a catastrophic nature. Um, I understand that the community here is, is very sensitive to the potential for catastrophic fire. My advice would be to continue to research this topic or pursue this topic uh, as a mitigation to what could actually happen here and keeping the fire small and jumping on it right away. There is no agency in, in San Luis Obispo County that can mitigate a fire by themselves uh, by NFPA standards with a first alarm assignment. We all have to rely on each other regardless. Um, even if all of my stuff is in quarters and where it's supposed to be. Um, currently Cayucus Cal Fire Station, the one on the south end of town, has been closed for two years. This is being rebuilt. Um, we're hoping to have that back up and running. That would be the next closest type three fire apparatus that is Cal Fire uh, to this, to an incident here in Cambria. Right now, it's living out of Paso Robles at the airport. So, um, and then the next closest would be either our headquarters station in proper San Luis Obispo on Santa Rosa or Paso Robles, uh, right there on Ramada. So obviously, once this apparatus is there, it's gonna be twenty, thirty, forty minutes before the next one gets now. Now fortunately, we have an airbase here in this county uh, with two S-two tankers and an air attack that get here pretty quick. And they can put about thirty-six hundred gallons of retardant on a fire fairly quick. And at peak fire season, and when we have red flag warnings and stuff, we will have a type one helicopter, which we don't normally have in the area, which is capable of several thousand gallons of delivery, uh, which is, which is a great asset, and, uh, you'll see the Chinook helicopter flying around occasionally, that twin-blade, uh, helicopter. And it's a great asset if it's here. So being able to jump on that fire quickly and put it out quickly is definitely advantageous to the fire department and the communities to make sure that we don't have some sort of catastrophic event.
Thank you. If I can ask a question? Okay, we talked about the difference between a type three and a type five and that the type five was actually built on a Ford F-three-fifty chassis. So it's smaller and able to get into the, the forest. And also the fact that if there are issues with the, um, F-four-three-fifty, we could take it to a local Ford dealer to have it repaired. And my understanding also is at some point, if the chassis needed to be replaced, that the firefighting part of it can be lifted up and put on a new chassis. Is that correct?
Yeah, potentially, uh, you know, depending on which manufact, which, which manufacturer you use, which vendor you use, they use, you know, Dodge, Ford, Chevy. Um, and they typically use a commercial chassis, but going from that type three, which is gonna require a special kind of driver's license and additional training in order to operate that vehicle. Uh, typically, it's an engineer or above that operates that vehicle. Um, a smaller lighter vehicle, an F-five-fifty type chassis, a three, a one-ton chassis, you can have a, a regular classy driver's license. Um, something else that came up in our conversation and just to tie into, uh, uh, the gentleman that you had from Fiscalini Ranch, obviously environmental impacts are, are important to you. Our heavy fire trucks are about forty thousand pounds, the type one engines forty-five to fifty thousand pounds. Driving those environmentally sensitive areas can be, you know, have, uh, environmental impacts. I can speak to the fire that specifically that we were on, uh, they had culverts out there and our heavy trucks going over there smashed those culverts, and we had to go back and repair them, and we caused some damage. Uh, and, and in, a lighter vehicle is less likely to cause that type of damage. If the vehicle is involved in an accident, you potentially could remove that firefighting, um, component, that module off and put it on another vehicle. Typically, fire apparatus have a service life that the NFPA recommends. Um, typically, if you get to the end of that service life, that may not be a valid, uh, thing anymore as, as it's twenty years old, and the technology may have changed as much, but, but it is possible. And, you know, they'll do anything for a price. Um, and I can speak with this, I, I'm the Equipment Committee Chair for San Luis Obispo County Fire Department. I design fire apparatus for the county. So, uh, we go to the fire engine factories on a fairly regular basis. I just got back from, from Nebraska, looking at type one engines, looking at type six engines, looking at ambulances. And that is kind of what's going on out there in the world. A lot of fire departments are tandeming type one engines with type fives, type sixes, and, uh, and having a great success. Where I used to work, uh, in Santa Clara County, San Jose Fire Department does it on a regular basis. They run a type six in tandem with their type one engine. Um, type six and type, type five are just gonna have a little bit of water component. Uh, chief did a good job explaining on his, on, on your last meeting. Uh, just a little bit of different capability, but, uh, generally the same types of chassis. Uh, the county fire department, we went with the type six, uh, which is, it's just a, a little bit less water capacity because we were more focused on the, on the rescue component of it. So we reduced the water capacity and we lost some typing there. But, uh, we definitely see the value as well on the county fire side of things.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have questions for Clipper clarification? I see Vice President Gray. No?
Yeah.
Um, Director Scott?
Yes, thank you. Um, I, you know, I, maybe I should say I'm sorry first, but I really need, um, this is what was in the budget. This is what we approved at one of the previous board meetings, and how much is this gonna cost? I mean, there's a lot of words here, but I just need the brass tacks about that. Did I, is that?
Yeah, uh, yeah, absolutely. Um, I, I think I can break that down pretty, basically, uh, it was approved in the budget to get a loan for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a fire engine. Uh, we came in at four hundred and forty-nine thousand and some change, right underneath that, fully loaded. So not just for the engine, but for also all the equipment that goes on it. And, uh, so we came in just under budget, uh, what was already approved from the board. But because of the cost of this, uh, it is coming back to you, and it's coming back with some options on how you would like to pay for it. You've already decided at the budget time that you would like to get a loan, but there's different loan lengths and, uh, and, and different avenues to do so. So we, we're just following, you know, the direction given from the board.
And, and also, to add to that, it's also justifying the difference because type three was explicit in the, the board package. So we're, we're proposing a type five and justifying...
The question is, how much?
How much is the difference between a three and a five? Yes, so I believe you guys have re, what is the current type three, about seven, eight hundred thousand fully loaded?
So right now, uh, the county fire department is in the process of specing a type three fire apparatus. So we're gonna piggyback onto the Cal Fire contract with Boise Fire Apparatus. And by the time we outfit the vehicle, we're, we're pushing about six seventy-five. Six hundred and seventy-five thousand.
For a?
Fully loaded with all the equipment onboard and the vehicle.
For a three.
Okay, so how much is the five?
The fi- the five without equipment is three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, with equipment is just under the four hundred and fifty thousand budgeted.
Thank you. That's what I needed to hear.
Okay, Director Farma?
Thank you, President Dean. Chief Providence, I just want to thank you for your, uh, presentation that was going faster than my brain could. But you really hit the nail on the head with everything. First, I want to, um, acknowledge what you said right in the beginning and then right near the end with regard to the, uh, the, uh, airplane equipment that you have, I guess, I don't know if that's the correct word, because I've lived here thirty-six years. And on numerous occasions, um, the planes have come over and dropped retardant to diminish a fire to where it was much easier to deal with. And it happened very quickly, and within like five, ten minutes of the fire starting. And I just want to acknowledge that I had, I didn't necessarily know I wanted who's doing this, but now that we know it's Cal Fire, thank you so much.
Yeah, and the, and the deployment model for the entire state in the, in the objective with cooperators, both Cal Fire and US Forest Service is to have aircraft over any fire within twenty minutes. So that's how all the bases are spread out.
I also want to, um, express my appreciation, and I feel other members of the community would as well because you were talking about, uh, being concerned about the environmental impacts of the vehicles when they go out there to fight a fire, and like I said, how they're going to deal with the natural world around us. And, uh, I appreciate that thought as well. Thank you. If I could also address with regard to the cost since, um, since Director Scott brought that up. Is there a way that we can, uh, and I guess I could ask our finance manager, Ms., uh, Denise Fritz, if, uh, is there a way that we can just pay cash for this and eliminate whatever the additional interest cost would be?
Yes, that is one of the options that's in the staff report.
Okay, thank you.
Vice President Gray?
Yes, thank you. I actually had a question that was related to, uh, Director Scott's question. And I, I want to make it, get clear because it sounds like we're getting a real bargain here if we go for the five. We've already budgeted four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a wildland fire engine. In fact, I think we, I voted, I voted on that, and we voted on that. I mean, we didn't know the story about the, uh, type one bogging down in the mud, I don't think. So, we, uh, I think that, that's, that question's been settled and, and, and properly so. It looks to me like, uh, it's, it's, there's two, there's two votes here. There's one of them is to simply change the designation of the, of the, of the truck we're getting, of the engine we're getting. Uh, and the price is gonna be within budget. So it doesn't, we don't have to make any budget adjustment or anything like that. So that's one vote, I, I would assume. Then the other one, a little more complicated, is to decide among the four options for paying for it. So it seems to me that we're, um, the easy question is to get the type five. Uh, and the tougher question is decide which makes more sense financially in terms of payment.
Okay, Director Thomas?
Thank you, President Dean. Uh, a, a number of things, but one question that comes to mind, uh, I have the impression that it'll be, uh, about two years lead time to get this vehicle?
That is correct. They're hoping that'll be less than that, but that is, um, unfortunately, unfortunately, that's kind of the vehicle industry right now. If we want to replace our type one, we're three to three and a half. And I'm starting to hear four-year lead times from some manufacturers.
Right, and, 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 and hope is good, uh, it springs eternal, but, uh, in general, things take longer, uh, more often than they go faster. So it gets me thinking, Cal Fire has a lot of these type five, uh, units and are, do you have one that you're taking out of service sometime soon with a new one taking delivery that, uh, we could pick up in the interim? Because two years is a long time to be sitting vulnerable.
Yeah. So, um, Cal Fire operates, uh, only type threes. So there, at San Luis Obispo County has just purchased two type sixes, and those are actually replacing uh, old rescue squads that carried no water and had no pump. Um, and so the capability of these two new apparatus that we're putting in service next month uh, was, is, it's fairly limited. Like I said, we went with the res, more of a rescue model. So we only have a hundred and ninety gallons of water onboard, so we, we can do a little bit for a little while, but, um, we took about two years to get to this point to where they're actually almost, almost in service. We gotta put up a couple more screws in and do some training on them, and then they're, they're in service. And one of them will be taken to the south of you, um, but won't be here proper in town. But we do not have any.
Okay, and just, uh, then also, uh, to make clear, we've, we've had the experience from the PG&E projects that, uh, the, the cost escalated over a couple of years, um, that we saw from the estimates we got two years ago. And, uh, that's what we're dealing with here. It sounds like this vehicle, uh, is, uh, the type three would have been four fifty a couple of years ago. It, the cost has now escalated to six seventy-five. We've seen the intense inflation. It's only gonna get worse. I'm in favor of taking action as, as soon as we can, and, uh, I agree, I guess, uh, step one, um, uh, are we, uh, going to entertain a motion to, um, to switch the, the type? Is that appropriate at this point, President Dean?
No, but we need public comment.
Of course.
Okay. Okay, do we have any public comment on this item?
I do have Elizabeth Benhausen with her hand raised. I'm just not sure it's on this item.
If it's on this item, let's go ahead or have her speak. If it's on the item that we did not see her hand on, maybe she can, um, speak on that when we're through with this agenda item.
Okay, and I also see another member of the public that wishes to speak too. So Elizabeth is first, followed by Jeff Wilson.
Okay. Okay. Dr. Bentonhausen, is this on the fire department or the fire truck issue?
Madam President, I would like to speak after this issue is concluded. And because of microphone trouble on your mics with Zoom, it's not easy always to understand what you're saying very quickly. Three of the directors, so I thank you for giving me the chance after this item to speak on the previous item I thought I was going to speak on. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Wilson?
Thank you, President Dean, Cambria. And I'd just like to ask, is there any kind of, I guess for lack of a better word, a pre-owned or used marketplace? Where we could, instead of buying new, there would be a serviceable option for us for a type five. Thank you.
Thank you.
There there are used fire engines. I have been chief another place and purchased to use fire engine and it usually comes with a lot of issues. Fire apparatus are typically, especially in a local, in a local place, it's built specifically for the needs of that community. This is custom designed for what Cambria needs and what we're gonna carry. You don't get that option when you do buy used. But you could find a used fire engine. Would not recommend it. I would recommend, that's what we've always done here is we buy what's actually needed for Cambria. So from that concept, yes, there is a a a marketplace, but. Fire engines, especially a wildland one, is never recommended to buy used because they get beat up and they get beat up hard. These are being driven off road. And in the worst conditions at high rates of speed, just like it's never recommended to buy a used police car. It's it's going to come, it's been beat up and it beat up hard. So these aren't, these aren't. Like a chauffeur vehicle with highway miles. The these things have seen the worst of the worst. And I I would recommend a way in a pinch, if you needed something right now because all of our engines broke down. That's something you you may have to do just because of lead time. I wouldn't recommend that financial investment or we were spending a lot of money trying to fix it.
Thank you. Does anybody in the audience have a public comment? No, okay. Part of what we're supposed to be discussing is how we're going to pay for it and there's four options. General Manager D'Enzo, do you want to go over those for us?
Yes, so there's, there's two finance options right now on the option one and number, option one and option two are. One for a ten year loan with an annual interest rate of four point two five percent. So total interest payments would be hundred twelve thousand nine hundred seventy five. And annual payments would be fifty six thousand seven hundred ninety seven. Option two is a fifteen year loan with annual interest rate of four point eight five. Total interest payments would be one hundred eighty thousand thirty two and annual payments would be forty eight thousand eight hundred sixty eight. And then. So option one and option number, option one and two are variations of what was already approved by the board action about financing the vehicle. Option three and four are somewhat hybrids because, you know, either. Fund entire purchase through through general funds is option three. And then option four is fund a purchase with a combination of general funds and installment sales agreement financing. So it's essentially like. You would have to decide how much percentage you'd wanna, it's like a down payment, so to speak. If you wanted to go that route, but you know, you would have to give us direction of how much you want, you know, whether it's half, twenty percent or whatever it is that you you decide. But those are the options that are that are before you and we're hoping that you would give us direction on either one of those options.
Madam. Yes, Director Tom.
Thank you. My my question is. What we previously asked our financial person. But. Do we need to put a deposit down when it gets ordered? And how much would that be?
You don't have to. They are willing to finance the whole thing. The price doesn't go up over those two years, so it's whatever it was when it was built. So we're not looking at it. The cost of the vehicle is going up, whatever we're locked in at is what it's locked in at. There is no requirement to put a down payment, but it's. We just want to make sure you have all the options. If we do a ten or fifteen year payment, you're looking at over a hundred thousand dollars. And interest over that time period. And so when you look at the interest charts that are in there, that's why we want to make sure you have all the options. In front of you to select how you would like to pay for it.
So if you order it, you get whatever the price is and it doesn't change.
Correct.
And it might take two years.
It could take up to two years.
And you don't start paying payments.
Till we get it.
Till you get it. Okay.
Okay, Vice President Gray?
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that too, because it seems my inclination on these. Even though there's an interest charge and some interest cumulative interest rate. You know, if impact in inflationary environment. It's it's not better to have more cash upfront and and stretch your payments out to pay off the asset in. Deflated or inflated dollars basically or or cheaper dollars. So. I I I want to curious about and I know if this is an analytical question, it's also kind of a judgment call, but. What? What would be the, I guess, what we would call the net present value, to use that term, of the money? That you're getting. Say, or giving up, I'd say, but by just paying for it all in lump sum in cash versus what you would be paying. In say a ten year loan at that four point four point twenty five percent interest rate, which one? You know, which one is better in terms of real, the real value of dollars today? I don't know if if anybody's gonna try to answer that because that's the question, you know, and it's not an easy one to answer. Now, Ms. Fritz is kind of smiling.
That would be an analysis that would need to be performed.
Yeah. It's a judgment call then. See to the pants.
Director Thomas?
Yeah. Following up on that question, I think this is something I may have asked a month or two ago, but of the funds we have in reserves. One of the things I'd like to know is how they're invested and what is the historic yield that we have recovered? You know, what, you know, what is our return? That would be a good starting point. And I agree, the Fed's not done. Interest rates are going higher. But my tendency is to buy this now just instinctively, but I'd like to know what what your sense is on on the return we've been getting. And that's at least half of the answer to.
Director Gray's question. The return of the money we have in hand, yeah.
So most of our funds are invested. We have a a small amount in the money market account and the Leif Local Agency Investment Fund. I do not have the information in front of me about what the yield is on that on a yearly basis, but that's definitely something. I mean, everything that you two are mentioning is part of the analysis of what is the best way to purchase this vehicle. It would need to be taken into consideration.
Did you have another question?
I did not, sorry.
Okay, so we freeze, we freeze the price when we sign the contract, but do we freeze the interest rate? We paid cash for our last two vehicles, so I'm not used to this.
No, I most times when you get a quote on an interest rate, it has a life to that. And so we would need to lock that in. Otherwise, it can increase or it could decrease depending on the market.
And how do you lock that in? This is why I'm not on the finance committee.
I I think if I'm interpreting what you're saying, yes, if we sign the contract and we. Through the the leasing company, that 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 locks it. That's so, yeah, when we sign on the dotted line, we're signing for two people. We're signing for South Coast Fire Apparatus. That yes, we are locking in, we are purchasing this and you can start trying to find a chassis and build a fire engine. And you're also signing with the finance company saying, yes, we are purchasing and we're agreeing to this term. So at that point, we're locked in.
So the Fed's raising the interest rate isn't gonna?
No, no, it doesn't affect us. Yeah, if you act now, you get whatever it is now. If it continues to go up, if it goes down, well, we're we're gonna be, we're gonna stay high. It's the gamble. It's like trying to buy a house right now.
Just one one more question regarding a bit of financing. What what is we consider that would be considered the useful life? Of the type five engine in ten years or fifteen? Is fifteen too long?
So the NFPA standard for fire apparatus, and that is NFPA is what gives our standards for fire service is fifteen years frontline. And then an additional five years as a reserve and then so twenty years max on a fire apparatus. And then after that, you're so far outdated and safety technology, they don't recommend you continue to use it.
Sure. Just just did, were you, did you have another question?
I just want some clarification. So Ms. Fritz. We would be able if we made this decision to just pay cash for this vehicle since it's already in the budget, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Vice President Gray, you wanted to make a motion?
I'll make a motion and hopefully maybe mainly do some discussion. I would move that. One motion for everything, that we. Direct the staff to proceed with purchase of the type five fire engine. And to adopt. Option one, financing it, which is the. Ten year installment sale agreement at four point twenty five percent.
Do I have a second on that motion? You look like you're heart at thought. Let me second, I will second the motion. Okay, so now you can.
Yeah, my my question that I wanted to ask, if we purchase outright. The cash is not, I assume the cash is not due until the equipment is. Ready for for delivery, but that we would have a an initial deposit. Something in the order of ninety thousand dollars, is that correct?
No, unfortunately, if we're gonna pay cash upfront, we do get a discount for also paying cash upfront. So there is a small discount of, I think, it's under five thousand dollars, but it would be if you're paying cash, you pay it all now. And and you're not worrying about financing and. But you do pay before arrival. With the loan, you will start your payments upon arrival and that's the way the municipal loan works.
Okay. Yeah, I had I had been poring over the reserves policy and the cash reserves and. Got the general fund. I'm not certain just what portion is assigned, what portion is unassigned, but it looked to me as if. We have the funds in the general funds to to buy this outright. And. But I'm also getting the impression that there's no time acceleration for paying cash. Often, that would be the case.
I would say, in a sense, money talks, so it. It does accelerate things because at the point of signing that PO and getting things moving forward, we're not also now going to the bank and dealing with the bank side of things and having the dealer deal with the bank. So you you probably are speeding up the process, but there is not some guarantee that they can get a chassis faster. That's the problem. Is that they have to go to Ford and say, Ford, I need an F five fifty chassis. And Ford has no F five fifty chassis right now because of parts delays. So as soon as they get a chassis. As soon as you pay and lock in and sign on the dotted line and once that PO is done, we are in line to for the next one to that comes in. And the longer it takes to get in line, more people are getting in line in front of you.
So if we pay cash, we're certainly not going to take longer to get it on the ground here and it could be faster.
Correct, you will go in line as soon as we sign that purchase order.
And and just just to follow up on that, we when we take out, when we adopt, say, we. Option one, we sign the purchase order right away too, we also get in line, right?
Absolutely, as soon as we get the purchase order. So just how long will it take us to get that purchase order done will depend on working with financing as well.
And with the financing, we don't have to lay out any cash.
This is correct.
As opposed to the cash. The cash.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Do we need to take public comment? Don Howell wishes to speak.
Okay.
Yeah, Don Howell, Cambria, just a question. I was just reviewing that as it was, the question was raised as to whether the interest rate would also be locked in. And so I think as is reading the verbiage here, it's not clear to me. So let me read it. Maybe Ms. Fritz or someone can enlighten me. Terms are based upon, and this is for the. The ten payment option, but the same verbiage I think is in the other one. Terms are based upon installment sale being bank qualified, but let me, let me jump ahead. Interest rate quote is valid for an acceptance within fifteen days and funding within sixty. That sort of bothers me a little bit because if if you're not paying for it until it's ready. Or it does the loan get funded when the PO is cut or is does the loan get funded when we pay? Because if that's the, if it's the case, if it gets funded when you pay and we're paying two years down the road. There's a very good chance that the interest rate could go way up higher. So I just think we need a clarify, you know, clarification of that particular issue and you'll find the same verbiage on the other alternative. Thanks.
Mr. D'Enzo, do you have any information on that or would you like Ms. Fritz to answer?
Yeah, it. I would also like to invite if Pam Duffield also has an opinion on this as well, so.
Okay. Mr. Duffield?
Yes, thank you, President Dean. So our past experience with municipal finance as a financing agent. For other vehicles that we've purchased, we basically have two options. At the time of signing the loan documents, the money in the loan can be remitted in full to the district. Or the money can be remitted in full to the vendor. We have the option to control that. How municipal finance payments work is the loan schedule will be completed. If you notice, that's attached. There's no due dates in those schedules that were presented as draft for your information. Once they disperse payment, we will have to make a payment within, I think, one of the loan schedules was twice per year. And one was quarterly every year. So based on those terms, that is when our debt service. Would go into effect depending on what option was selected. So it is not. A two year window to wait to pay them. You know, we sign the loan docs, we lock into that rate and then funds are dispersed. So that is, that is how these finance arrangements work with municipal finance.
Thank you. Does any of the directors have an additional question from from Mr. Duffield?
Question for maybe a question for Miss, well, question for anybody, Mr. Duffield also, but so I understand from what you're saying. That we could get the money upfront at that and at that interest rate. And then we hang on to it until we buy the. Engine, say, two years later, but are we paying interest on that as soon as the money is dispersed to us?
Yes, we pay interest as depending on which option you select. So like I said, the loan payments are different depending on the options, whether it's a ten year or a fifteen year. So you know, our in our payments are due a certain amount of time once that money is dispersed.
Okay, so we start making payments as soon as we get the money, not as soon as we get the truck?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
Got it. Okay, we do have a member, we do have a member of the public that wishes to speak. Okay, got it. Got it. Okay, we do have a member, we do have a member of the public that wishes to speak. Yes, Jeff Wilson?
Thank you. Um, just by virtue of listening to these conversations, it appears to me that making a decision today on financing options is premature. And that it would be appropriate to undertake with Mr. Duffield, Ms. Fritz, a really more detailed financial analysis of each option. And providing to the board and the public the pros and cons of each option, because there certainly are, is everything pros and cons. And just as I feel it here today, I mean, the motion to actually acquire the vehicle seems fine. That's great. It seems premature, given just the conversations in the last ten minutes from, you know, Mr. Howell and others. It's too premature. You need, you need more to make a more informed decision is my suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
I'd like, I'd like to amend my motion because I, I think what Mr. Wilson was saying is kind of what I've been saying, too. We can bifurcate this and simply say, direct staff, make, make the decision to buy the type five, the type five engine at this point. And have staff come back with financial analysis for the options that is more complete. And, you know, specifies when the money is going to be spent, when it must be dispersed, when the interest rate, how long the interest rate holds, when we start paying interest, all those factors to see what the, the timetable, the timetable look over time would be for the loans, not just the total amount. I think we need a little more information. So I would modify my motion if, if, if the second agrees, simply to direct staff at this point to, to proceed with the purchase of the, I mean, we made the decision, we purchased that engine. But then come back with a report on financing so we can make a little more informed decision.
Director Scott?
Yeah, my, from what Steph was saying, it seems to me that that's not a possibility. If we, if we make the decision, we need more information, then we don't get put in line.
So.
I mean, the, the, the financing is hand in hand with saying, yes, we want the truck.
I, Pam Duffield would also would like to answer this question.
Okay, Mr. Duffield?
I completely agree with that statement. This is a very large capital purchase. And my professional opinion is that it's, it's not a good decision to make a purchase, but not know how you're going to pay for that purchase. It seems like it's disjointed to me.
Director Farmer?
Yes, thank you. I would just like to ask Chief Vincent. We've waited this long. How did you feel about waiting, let's say, another three weeks to get the complete analysis of all the payment options that we have?
No, absolutely. I completely understand that undertaking. I, I will tell you, in three weeks, we may not have the same interest rate. And I can, depends on how you feel if inflation is going to go in three weeks from now, we're not going to have the same rates. And then in addition to that, I don't know if the fire engine cost is going up. This, this quote's originally from December. And they've been holding off for us to bring this forward. They've allowed to keep the same pricing because they knew it takes a bit in government to get this before board. I have no idea when I go back to them and get an updated quote again, if in three weeks from now, this fire engine goes up in costs as typically they do. So I, I can't guarantee that. I'm very excited to hear that this board has agreed on the need. And so we're not gonna, that, that's, I guess, kind of the backstory to this is waiting three weeks is the same gamble of you may actually spend more money.
Thank you.
Pam Duffield has her hand raised again.
Sure, I would just like to echo the chief's comments that if we do kick the can down the road, so to speak, and want to discuss financing options at the next available board meeting, we would be required to get updated financing quotes because our current rates that you're viewing today would be expired. And, and I, again, we can't tell you what those interest rates would be, if they would be higher or lower. We just don't know the answer to that question.
Thank you. Okay, you, Director Scott. I mean, I'm sorry, Thomas.
Is my middle name? Thank you, President Dean. Decades working in industry, developing project decision-making systems and training decision-making teams. Basic principles of making a high-quality decision is the decision framed properly. I think this is. Do we have the range of alternatives in terms of equipment? Yes. Do we have meaningful, reliable information regarding each of those alternatives, including the financing options? And clearly, at this point, we do not, we don't know the rate of return that we're getting on our existing reserves. We haven't really poured through. Is this the right use of our general fund reserves? So in terms of information, having meaningful, reliable information to make this decision to commit Cambria's nearly half a million dollars, we, we lack that information as Mr. Wilson has astutely pointed out. Is my volume okay? Really? Okay. In terms of values and trade-offs, I think we need to have that conversation regarding, is it wise for us to commit general fund reserves for this? And we've just taken, taken on a load of, of debt. Not many people in Cambria really are eager to take on more debt. So I, that's one reason pushing us, me and the logic of buying at cash, but we haven't done that analysis. So I wouldn't mind having a special meeting. I wouldn't mind hustling on this. The, the, we have to put a lot of our time and effort into hiring a general manager, absolutely. And this is one of those long-term issues that, you know, but it's very critical. The, the next wildfire could be tomorrow, it could be today, it could be any time in the next two years. So yes, I want to get this vehicle on the ground here ASAP. But I'm going to hopefully be a broken record in terms of this decision-making logic. And if we have a gap in any of these areas, it's just not prudent for us to proceed without the information we need to, to analyze the, you know, the trade-offs.
Ms. Dutton, you want to read back the, the motion that's on the floor?
Yes, Vice President Gray amended the motion to direct staff to make a decision to buy the type five fire engine and have staff come back with the financial analysis so the board can make an informed decision. And there was no second on the amendment.
You wish to hold that motion?
No, I don't actually. I think it sounds like we're, and what Director Thomas is just saying, I think this, the prudent thing to do would be, our sense is obviously that we want staff to buy that machine, that engine. That's no, that's no question. But to maybe continue this to a date certain, I don't think we need a special meeting, but to a date certain, and have staff do an analysis of the financing alternatives with the timing, timeframes and everything. We come back and just make the decision on the financing at the same time we go ahead with the purchase. And I don't, I don't know about, say, three weeks. Interest rates could go up, they could go down a little bit, the price of the, the price of the engine could go up. That's always, you know, it's like you're, you're talking to a realtor about, you know, making a bid on a house. They're always going to say, you know, gotta do it now. You don't know what's going to happen, but I, I'm almost willing to take that risk because I think we're, I'm not clear about the financing terms. And I'm not clear, as Director Thomas isn't clear on what the trade-off is in terms of return on our money with financing versus using the general fund. So I would, I would prefer to hold off until, say, the next meeting.
So you want to hold off for three weeks to the meet, the first meeting in March, or do you want to call a special meeting?
I think.
How long will it take to get a financial analysis, Ms. Fritz? That the financial analysis that they're asking for?
I have a question, too.
Okay.
I, I mean, I'd like to consult with Ms. Duffield and, like, to give you an exact timeframe. We've not had that conversation, nor have I ever done an analysis of this kind at the district. So, you know, we can put it high, high up on our priority list and get it done as soon as possible.
Okay, so you would like Ms. Duffield to give you a timeframe? Is that what you're saying?
I'd like to discuss it with her, yes.
Okay, off, off, off break, I mean, off, out of the meeting?
Pam actually wishes to speak again.
Okay, and then Deborah Scott has a question. So if she can ask her question first, in case it's something Pam needs to answer. Ms. Scott?
Yes, Pam, what is, when does this quote expire?
Mr. Duffield?
Sorry, I was having trouble in meeting. I apologize. So let me look at the packet. Let me see. I need to look at the exact date that, so they gave us this quote on February second, twenty twenty-three. And I believe it is good for fifteen days. Says it right on that schedule, that it is a fifteen-day expiration. So somewhere around the seventeenth to eighteenth of February, that quote would be expired.
Today's the sixteenth of February.
Correct, but I had to get something in, in order to publish the board packet. We had to get that document. So had, had it come into, you know, had your board approved it today, we could let municipal finance know that we were gathering the paperwork and we'd be getting it to them in the next few days. And they would probably hold on to that rate. They just don't want to hold it for weeks on end while we're deciding.
Okay, and how long would it take to get the type of financial analysis that Directors Thomas and Vice President Gray are asking for?
Well, so I have a little bit of the information just off of the top of my head. So our LEAF, which is our state-held savings account, we earn about two and a half percent through that avenue. And mind you, our interest rate is four and a half percent paying out. So that helps in your decision-making. And then the funds that are held within Pacific Premier Bank, our money market account earns about one to maybe one and a quarter percent if we're lucky. It just depends. They do a different way of managing their funds. Our funds with LEAF get a higher interest rate because they're pooled with other, with other governmental entities.
Just, just real quick. So that was when the financing quote expires. This, the fire engine quote expires, if you read at the bottom there, unless accepted within thirty days. And the original quote we got for this was December twenty-second. And so they've already extended it, and they said they're not going to extend it again at the same amount. So we will pay more if I, if this comes after March sixth. The price of the fire engine will go up. They went up with the new year, but they honored it because they knew where I was trying to get it to the board. Correct, short month.
So it, it kind of looks like we're headed toward using reserves.
Well, if you're going to pay cash for it and not finance it, but your first motion, I believe, was to, to.
But the, I don't know. And my, my first motion got a second from the chair, and I withdrew it. My second, my second motion did not. So it's not, it's not on the floor for discussion. I'm just saying, we need to make a decision as to what to, what to do today or just, or to continue it.
I have a motion.
Okay, Director Scott?
Yes, I would like to move that we go ahead and purchase the type five fire engine and we pay for it from the general fund reserves.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Director Scott and a second by Vice President Gray. Can we have a roll call vote? Director Scott? Vice President Gray?
I.
Director Thomas?
I, because I heard the primary piece of missing information for me.
Director Farmer?
I think this is to the best interest of the right peers of this community. So I am voting yes. Thank you.
President Dean? Yes. Okay, we have five ayes, motion passes, and would anybody like a five-minute break?
As long as it takes, as long as it takes.
Okay, it is, I'm going by the clock in the back of the room. Well, I guess. Okay, let's make it three fifteen. Does that work? Okay. Which clock? Okay. Okay, we're going to be taking a break until three fifteen from the clock in the front of the room. Thank you. Okay, it's three fifteen? Okay, thank you. It's three fifteen. I'm calling this meeting back to order. Before, before we move on, before we move on to the finance managers' report, Ms. Bentonhausen wanted to speak on agenda item five B, the facilities and resources managers' report, and we missed her hand. So Ms. Bentonhausen?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I want also to thank Director Scott for her capability in listening to a conversation among the directors and discerning an efficient and reasonable course of action to take. And this last item concerning the purchase of the fire truck, I welcome her presence on the board for many reasons, including that. But I also want to say that the directors might be unaware that during your biological break, your voices are also being captured by microphones around the area of your meeting. And some of the conversations were very interesting, too, during the break. But I did thank you, Madam President, for allowing me to get in here, and I will raise my hand more quickly next time, right at the beginning of an agenda. But I wanted this morning to read the letter I sent to Manager Mendoza about resources and facilities this morning. I've also posted it on social media where it's showing up quite a bit and agreeing, responses agreeing with my gratitude toward Manager Mendoza and the department. So this is what I sent to him and the rest of his staff and also to you this morning. I write to thank you, Mr. Manager Mendoza, for an excellent report in the agenda today for the meeting of the Board of Supervisors. I note my error. You are only directors, I assume, or you are more than supervisors. Who knows? Your letter is clearly written, helpfully illustrated with photos and comprehensive. My gratitude flows to you and all the staff, Alberto Novas and Martin Garcia, maintenance technicians, and Haley Dodson, administrative analyst in HR and IT, for the work you do in our community services district. You all work full-time and very often overtime to respond to what the climate and weather produce and to human crises, too, such as the need for services for persons living without houses or apartments. I also think your position should be changed back to supervisor, not manager, Mr. Mendoza, because of the definition and distribution of administrative power. This responsibility of the general manager should be addressed explicitly by the Board of Directors at the forefront of their search for a new general manager. Once again, thank you for the public services provided by facilities and resources. You help the community in so many ways, and your monthly report documents that very well. I will read this comment as I'm doing now. And now I want to add, I so appreciated the video that Manager Mendoza added about the bringing down of the storm-damaged tree in the close proximity to the monarch butterfly clusters. Far too often, in my experience of almost twenty solid years of attending your meetings, far too rarely has there been a discussion of environmental consequences of particular actions that don't seem environmentally and ecologically important on the surface. I want of that issue, I want to thank the, the department very much for, by and large, their consistent application of environmental protection to the actions that they take out in the outer world. to the actions that they take out in the outer world and also sometimes in the buildings. So I thank them again, I am so grateful for this quality of public service and I hold them in high esteem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Bentonhausen. I'm sure, sorry Carlos is not here, I'm sure he very much would have appreciated the praise for what he's doing along with his, his crew. He is doing an excellent job. Did you have something?
Just, Ms. Bentonhausen's point brings some things to mind, is it appropriate to bring that up?
We're not supposed to comment on public comments. But feel free to contact her. Okay, I'm not trying to quiet you down. This is the Finance Managers' Report next.
Thank you, President Dean, good afternoon. The Finance Managers' Report is highlighting activity for the month of January 2023. The first page, page has the chart detailing any payments made to directors in the month of January for meeting compensation requests that they submitted. And it also details out all of the available cash balances. The district received a FEMA reimbursement for COVID-19 expenses and the breakdown for the reimbursement by department is detailed on page two. And I'm here for any questions that anyone has regarding the report.
Director Farmer?
So, a question, I just want to clarify for folks out there in the great paying audience and they might be looking at this and saying, well, see, you know, three of the five directors didn't even attend any meetings because it says zero. And now I don't know about the other two directors, but I just, I'm embarrassed to say, just haven't gotten around to turning in my timesheet, so to speak. And that's the reason there's no money being spent and it looks like I didn't do anything. That's, that's the reason it says zero by mine, thank you.
Yes, and this, this report is detailing out the financial transactions, this is not an attendance record.
No, I understand that, but people might think that.
I know, I know, I've been guilty myself of sometimes putting 10 months together, forgetting to do one. Director Scott?
Yes, thank you. So, in response to that, in the paragraph up above where it says number of meetings attended, could you change that wording? Oh. Is that possible?
Um, so it's saying CCSD directors may receive compensation of $100 for each meeting attended. I feel like that's a true statement.
No, no, I mean at the last, the last. The table below shows the meeting month, number of meetings attended, and the total compensation for each director.
Yes, I can change the wording on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. The, either of the other directors have a question, do we have any public comment on this, Ms. Duffield?
I do not.
Okay, anybody in the audience have any questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Ms. Fritz. Moving on to the Utilities Report, Mr. D'Enzo. Um, Mr. D'Enzo, I can stop you just a second. Is his microphone able to be heard on zone? Okay, District Council just said that he couldn't hear you. Mr. Cornell, can you hear me? Mr. Cornell, can you hear Mr. D'Enzo?
I cannot hear Mr. D'Enzo, I haven't been able to hear from the start, wonder if the public's got the same problem.
Just Mr. D'Enzo's microphones or others?
No, I can hear everyone else, and I could hear Ray before, was it on, Ray?
Yes.
Now I can, now I can hear it.
Okay, great.
Okay, okay, thank you. Sorry, go ahead, Mr. D'Enzo.
And also in, in the Water Department, in, in the Water Department, we had, of course, a storm affected, affected us too. As you can see, some of the pictures there, the, one of the, the chemical tanks blew over the sheds. That chemical tank was empty, just to let everyone know during that time when, when it blew out, when it blew out, it was something that we, we had installed. But we weren't using it at the time, but it did blow out in the, in the high winds that we experienced there in the San Simeon Well Field. Also, there was flooding issues that we, we experienced there, the, our guys were able to, to, to fix it with, we were able to rebase some of the roads so that we can maintain access again to, to the, to the well sites. In the distribution system, we had the, the storm, there was a falling tree issue that, that's shown in the picture there that also affected the, that caused one of the service lines to be taken out. Again, due to the quick action of Andy, he was able to, to address it quickly and, and, and you know, with, with minimal time of, of service loss. The, the water reclamation facility, just moving on to the water reclamation facility, I, some of the maintenance that we're doing there is that the operators are, are circulating some preservative in our RO filters to maintain, to maintain it clean and prevent biological fouling in that system. So that's something that we, we are doing somewhat regularly now since we installed the, the, those RO filters. Moving on to the engineering table, I, I want to highlight a couple of things of interest. Regarding that in-stream flow study task one, what, what it says there is that Technical Advisory Committee is reviewing the document, that is true, that it, that is, it's still in their, in their purview to review. I am trying to, to set up a meeting now to gather everyone together, but it's, it is kind of challenging. We, there were some dates that, that we considered, but not everyone was able to attend, but hopefully before the end of the month, we're able to, we'll be able to get a meeting together. Relating to the Stewart Street Tank Project, we did get the, the guidance from, from the federal government in January 6th. So now, you know, we're, we're going to be moving forward with, with the application. One of the things that we do need to do is do a NEPA environmental document, which is the, the, the federal government equivalent of the CEQA, which is a California environmental document. We will be meeting with the EPA representative on this in, in, in a couple of weeks, so just wanted to update you all on that. The, the well levels is trending average at this time. I, I know that the graph showed that it went up during the rains, which happens in our, in our creek aquifers. It, it responds very quickly to terrains and high flows. But it looks like it's, it's, it's equalized, it, it equalized now to, to a normal setting. And, and actually, I just got a message during the meeting that we got our mid-month readings and it's still average. So that's, it's consistent with what you see there. I, we, we are maintaining a stage one water shortage level, which is a normal level. And so we don't, we don't have any intention of changing that. And, and that concludes my report. Our water usage was a, a touch lower this month compared to what it was last year as well. It's also the other thing I wanted, wanted to make mention, but I am available for any questions.
Does anyone on the board have a question, Director Scott?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, I have a question on the San Simeon, this is on page 37. San Simeon Well Field Transmission Main Project. It says that the request for proposal for preliminary design and alternatives analysis is under development, has that RFP gone out yet?
It did go out, it did go out, yes. As a matter of fact, it went out this morning.
You knew I was going to ask.
Okay, Director Farmer?
Yes, President Dean, the first thing I want to comment on is on page 31, down at the bottom, where you're, where it's described, during the last rains, we maxed out our flow meter at 2,000 gallons per minute, six times the average flow. I think just reading it like that, and therefore the pressure that John Otzen and his staff were under to maintain the quality of operations in the collection system as well as at the sewer plant itself, I mean, that sounds like so overwhelming to me. I just, well, I think I've commented on it before, but I'm wondering how often they slept during that process. So my two thumbs up for John and his staff. With regard to on page 35, the water reclamation facility, so continued to recirculate chemicals to maintain newly-installed membrane elements, preservatives, reduce the potential for biological growth, stabilizing compounds. How often does this process take? I mean, how frequently, how frequently are we dealing with this type of situation on, on a facility that isn't operating?
Well, our, our operators go out there, two operators are typically assigned to this and they, they do go out once a week to, to observe any kind of changes in, in the condition and, and if they need to recirculate it, they will. And typically, it's, it's about once a week that they do that, so.
So, so it said also, excuse me, I didn't interrupt you, but, so it said newly-installed membrane elements, how frequently does that happen?
Well, I, I made, I made, I made mention, I believe it was two months ago, that we insta, we installed the RO filters there. So, and, and keep in mind too, there, the, the microfiltration membranes are also there too, that they, they need to be maintained as well. But the reverse osmosis filters were installed recently, you know, within the last couple of months. And so now those need to be, uh, those need to be maintained and, and we need to have a preservative circulated so that it doesn't foul, like what I said.
Also, I appreciate you having the engineering report every month. I just, I would like to get some updates on three or four of these items, if you don't mind. With regard to in-stream flow study task one, and you were talking about the Technical Advisory Committee and you're going to be connecting with them shortly. Do we have any idea how long this process is going to be taking with regard to in-stream flow study one? And also, I would ask the same question with regard to the Endangered Species Act, Section 7. And how long is task one going to be taking before completion, just some kind of ballpark figure?
So the, the Technical Advisory Committee, I, like I said, I was trying, I'm still trying to get a meeting with them together. It's, it's, it's very difficult because, just because it's, it's multi-agency and, and everyone's busy. The, as far as the Endangered Species Act, Section 7 consultation, the, the in-stream flow study task one, we made a decision that, that we wanted to include that data in that consideration of the Endangered Species Act consultation. So that is working, e- even though we did, like I mentioned, a couple of weeks ago, that, or a month ago, that, that we are trying to engage them in doing a pre-consultation because we want to be mindful of our, our county permit, you know, relating to the AMP, the, the adaptive management plan. But in reality, the, the in-stream flow study task one will need to inform that Endangered Species Act consultation. The fact that I don't have a meeting with, with the Technical Advisory Committee yet scheduled, it's difficult to tell you what the date would be because.
A lot of people involved and we have.
Yeah, a lot of people are involved and once we do have a, once we do have the meeting, everyone's going to be expressing opinions on the in-stream flow study. And, you know, they're, they're going to be suggesting different, different courses of action, some of which I might have to bring before the board, you know, for further action, you know, because it, it might require money to, to investigate or, you know, like I said, I don't want to try to get ahead of it too much. But, but the bottom line is, it's like, I, I do need to schedule that meeting first. And then once we schedule that meeting and once we get their comments, I'll be able to give you a better, a better timeframe then, so.
Okay, well, I, I will ask you about that for at least another two or three months then, just to let you know. So, so I just have one more, one more comment and observation on page 40, 42, with regard to the, you know, the 10 years of the well levels. And you mentioned, obviously, we had that great rain that we're so blessed to have had, which really moved the well levels up to the highest point ever in some fashion. But it's dropped down, you know, quite a bit in, let's say, the last two weeks of January. And you were just commenting on the fact that actually water use has dropped a little bit. That might be because maybe the population has dropped a little bit or there are fewer people visiting because of the weather and everything. But why would it be that the well level dropped as rapidly as it did in that two-week period? Can you conjecture in any way why that might be?
Yeah, the, so it looks like it's a very steep drop because there was a very high flow. So it, because, because the high flow happened, it's, it brings it up a, a little bit higher than what it could be or what it's, what we normally would expect. So remember that, that each grid line is, is two feet and there was high flows that. And there was high flows that, that we saw. And, and it showed, it, it, that, that, you know, the well levels reflected, the, essentially was flooding in a lot of places over our banks during that time. So, and if you remember how, how our creek aquifer behaves, it's like, we, we don't store the water, the water keeps flowing out to the ocean. So it will, it will like go back to equilibrium, if you will. So you, you won't see that, you, you, you won't see that line go up much higher than, than it would, unless, you know, of course it was sustained, so there were, if there were some sustained rains, which we didn't see in, in January, you know, it rained a bunch in early January, but we haven't seen any since then. So right now this is February, so. It, it is something that I, I expected to see, I wasn't surprised to see the results. But we are, we are trending average though.
All right, thank you, right now, sorry to kind of pop those questions on you there, appreciate the answers.
Okay, Vice President Gray?
Yeah, thank you, President Dean, Mr. D'Enzo. I had a question, actually, on one of the engineering report items. And it's response to what number of comments I've heard, the questions I've heard about the pilot project for the ZLD project, but ZLD processed by Global Water Innovations. Just to, just to clarify, some people seem to concern that we would be, it's up to CCSD to say to get a permit, which I assume would be needed, it's up to CCSD to do that, and CCSD pays the costs and lots of other things that are connected with the project. As I understand it, Global Water Innovations basically shoulders all the costs and has responsibility for the permits, is that correct?
Yes, they, well, they will help us with getting the permits.
I mean, yeah, we have to have a permit, they could, they could, but in terms of, explain that, how that would work and how we would not basically be saddled with the, all the hard work.
Well, stepping back a little bit on the history with this, I, when, when Global Water Innovations approached us with this, with this possibility, I told them, I, I was point blank in telling them that, that, that we had difficulty doing even a pump test back in, when, when we wanted to, to run the, the system to, to get some data that we, we needed. But this project, you know, they deemed was, you know, it was, it wasn't going to be the same, which is, which is true. And we, we aren't going to be running the, the system more than maybe four or five days. And the approach is going to be from a maintenance standpoint, because we're not going to be direct injecting the, the water into the, into the, into the aquifer, like if, as if we were running it, we would do it as if we were doing a maintenance, which we, we currently have a permit to do that now. As a matter of fact, I, you know, the, one of the, the regional board representatives was observing that meeting and, and had a question to me about it. And that was going to be our approach. So we are already kind of talking about it. And, and when, when, when we're talking about a permit too, it's, it's, it's more than, it's basically, we're going to try to, to do a pilot project that's going to be within the framework of what we're already permitted and allowed to do. So in which case, we're, we are, we are already allowed to do maintenance on, on that system. And that's what we're going to time it, you know, we're, we're going to time it with our maintenance schedule. Like, because right now October was the, the, the last date that, that possibly this could happen. And, and we're going to try to schedule some, some major maintenance then, so that we'll, we'll try to kill two birds with one stone. But we will be working with the agencies with, in all of these things.
Yeah, now it sounds like October would be, if, if you're going to have major maintenance next October, October of this year, is that kind of when the target for the pilot trial, the trial is, the pilot project?
Well, typically we have our, a major maintenance right around that time. So, you know, if we can schedule it right around the same time, it would be great, so.
Okay, thank you.
Director Scott?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. I was wondering on page thirty-six, if the document that is in your report, the Instream Flow Study Task One, is that document available for the public?
I can make it available to the public, yeah. Understand though, that, that the TAC will still need to comment on it, yeah.
Director Thomas?
Thank you, President Dean, yeah. My first question was, was the same as Director Scott's. It, it'll be useful for members of the public, I know, would like to see the, this draft of the Instream Flow Study. I personally appreciate the fact that I'll be reviewing it after the TAC has reviewed it and it's finalized. But I also know there are members of the public very astute that want, want to see that. So I appreciate that. And, and also regarding the Adaptive Management Plan Annual Report, I assume that would also be similarly available through the website or?
The Adaptive Management Plan?
Yeah, the, yeah, the, the annual report.
Yeah, I can make that available too.
Great, and that first paragraph on page thirty-one, again, back on the heroic effort, I just looked at that line that says moving water from the affluent holding basins into vacant sections of the old plant. I'm trying to visualize where John and the team put that. Sounds brilliant, and, you know, can you give, give me just a visual on?
Sure, sure, if you picture, if you picture in your mind's eye the, where our, our, our erosion basins are, that, that, that concrete structure directly right next to them, there's two large brown tanks. We don't use those tanks, we, we, we only use like a portion of one of the tanks. So when the storm happened, they, you know, that other tank was full wa-, of water, and the tank that we partially used was also full of water. And we also directed some water to, to the affluent ponds as well. So it was, and, you know, don't let, don't let alone the public, we are using, we're, we're not releasing that water to the environment. We're actually, now that everything's subsided, we're treating that water, we're directing that water back to, to the front of the plant. So to be treated properly.
What a shame.
Okay, okay, we have a request to speak from the public, Ms. Heinrichs.
Well, thank you, and thank you, Director Scott and Thomas, for requesting those Instream Flow Studies and the biological report. I look forward to seeing those. Those will be very important, and thank you, Mr. D'Enzo, for offering to make them public. Will we also have access to the TAC meeting? Will the public be able to observe, or will there be minutes of release or recordings of the meetings made available? When can we look forward to hearing about the letters of concurrence from the regulatory agencies? In the later item seven A below, you said that you were going to be presenting these in the second quarter of 2023. So I'm, I'm wondering about the timeline of that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Heinrichs. Mr. D'Enzo, do you?
The, no, the, the TAC meeting will not be recorded. The letters of concurrence, that's really not going to be happening until the, realistically, until the, the section seven consultation is completed. So I, I don't have a date for that.
Some of these timelines look like they're depending on other agencies. You know, Ms. Otson, do you have any more public comment?
Yes, Elizabeth Benhausen.
Okay, Dr. Bentonhausen, you're on.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I want to thank Director Scott and Director Thomas, because I also have the question about Mr. Dan, Acting General Manager D'Enzo's comment about the, the draft, I can make it available to the public. That was already said by the, by Mr. D'Enzo at a, at RNI meeting. So I'm very glad now that it is in process of making it available to the public. And I want to ask though another question. Why is the TAC group being assembled for a meeting before receiving apparently their written comments about the draft? If they already have the draft, why not simply assemble the written comments for distribution to the whole TAC group and then possibly a meeting? Because it sounds like their whole review process is being somewhat slowed in the way that this is all set up. I fully agree that the public will, my question was, when will the public see this draft? And I'm glad the others have already addressed that, that comment. I also thank Ms. Heinrichs for asking whether we will be, the public will be allowed to see any of this meeting of TAC. How will we know, what, maybe through minutes, what has happened at that meeting? A final comment on a somewhat related issue, but not directly. I have looked both times they've been posted on the website, and I have looked carefully and read carefully the supporting documents for the chemistry of the so-called desalination process that will be used in the pilot project. And I want to say that I have raised a question twice. I know it will continue to get raised by many people as we go ahead. But we should not assume that documentation for a national proposal is necessarily relevant to any particular aquifer, which no longer has under operation technically a desalination plant. I want to see in the future, the CCSD ask for officially, from this particular company, documentation about pertinent salinity at different times and places. I have asked for that at the RNI meeting the other day as well. But I'm saying that if you have a proposal written to purchase and use a giant gorilla, it is not necessarily applicable to apply for and conduct a pilot study on a, an under, on a, on a pocket gopher. They are not comparable. And unless we start paying attention to the distinctiveness of the water reclamation facility in relationship to desalination, we will bog down in conversations within the CCSD again and again. I thank, finally, I thank Director Thomas for wanting to respond to my public comment about the saving of the monarchs on the environmental issue, because the Brown Act permits directors to make responding comments directly and quickly to a public speaker in this regard. And I hope that we see a rejuvenation of that aspect of the Brown Act in our board meetings again, Board of Directors. Thank you very much.
If you would like to hang on a minute, Ms. Bentonhausen, I'll let Michael respond to that.
Oh yeah, this was regarding Dr. Benhausen's comment regarding the organization titles of supervisor and manager, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Right, because in corporate experience, there was sort of a protocol of, of first-line supervisors, those individuals to whom reported workers who had no one else reporting. And then the person to whom supervisors reported, either called a superintendent in operations or, or manager. Now, the, I guess the, the potential is, we could, the board could have a, have a chat at some point about what nomenclature we want on the org chart. Because each of the, the departments, the role of the individual is manager, and we have the, in fact, you know, the program manager, a role to whom no one directly reports. So I wouldn't encourage us to have knee-jerk reactions to the comments, but it might be worthwhile to, to have some discussion sometime in the future regarding sort of organization structure and nomenclature, how we want to manage that.
Okay, we do need to extend the meeting, I'm sorry, we do need to extend the meeting?
For four-thirty?
Four-thirty, does everybody agree with four-thirty? Yes?
I, ma'am, if I may just say, all of your microphones are producing garbled sound. And I couldn't hear the mic that was off from, from General Manager D'Enzo, but all of you are producing garbled sound, which those of us in the outland via Zoom, I, at least I, find very difficult to understand, thank you very much.
Thank you, and I think AGP is checking that. Okay, was that a non-public comment on the utilities report, Ms. Ms. Otson?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next we have the consent agenda. Is there anything on here that a director would list, wish pulled for further discussion beyond just asking a simple question for clarification? Director Scott?
I just have a simple question for clarification.
Okay. Does anybody?
I just have a question too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, Director Scott?
Yes, thank you. I had requested in the past, and I just wanted to request that again, that this expense approval report, it's difficult, I mean, you can go through, and I do go through every single item, but it would be really helpful, I think, for, not only for me, but for the public, for you, for there to be highlights, like something out of the ordinary. Not something that's good or bad or anything, but something out of the ordinary that, that could be like a cover page on this. And I don't know if that's something that could happen, but it would be really helpful for me.
Thank you.
And I just had a brief correction, I think it's correction on the minutes, page sixty-eight, and a public comment. Linda Prentice has COOL after her name, one of the, one of the people submitting public comments, C-O-O-L.
Yeah, she lives in Cool, California.
Oh, Cool, California?
Yeah.
So that's not a correction?
Wow.
That's all I have.
I didn't know there was a town called Cool, California.
I didn't either.
Wow.
Probably really cool.
I, I, I move that the, we have adopted the consent agenda.
Second, okay. Was there any public comment on the consent agenda?
Yes, let me see here, six D, Ms. Heinrichs, I think, had a comment on the consent agenda.
Thank you, yes, just briefly, please consider continuing remote access to public meetings. This has got, some cost is attached, but it's well worth it for increased public access, which was the board's top priority in its strategic plan, thank you.
Thank you, I think we do intend to continue on with Zoom, along with us being in person, so, yes. Thank you. I think we're attempting to do standing committees and Zoom in-person too. Director Farmer?
Thank you, just a couple of comments on the consent agenda. My first is on page sixty-four, just a reminder that once again, under Western Alliance Bank loan payments, we are making our twice-a-year payment for the Emergency Water Supply Project, now known as the WRF, of three hundred twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-three cents, which we will continue to do until August of 2034. I would also like to make a comment on item six D with regard to our meetings. And I know we don't have any real control over this, but we have great technology that is allowing us to do things that we've never been able to do before. With regard to having now being ordered kind of by the governor, that we need to meet in person. I realize it's Canada, we don't have to drive that far. But I see that there's like thirteen folks on the board, staff out in the audience. And two people came here together, but these are folks that we had to drive here, put a little pollution in the air. AGP have to load up their equipment, come up here, they're driving up from Morro Bay. I just feel as if, and like I said, it's not a decision that we really have any control over. I just feel as if, and like I said, it's not a decision that we really have any control over. But I felt like our, our board meetings with regard to on Zoom were efficient and effective. And I'm just disappointed, I mean, I love meeting people in person, nothing wrong with that. But I just feel like we don't need to be getting in our cars and driving down here and putting exhaust in the air when one of the main challenges we have on this planet right now is how we're treating the environment. That's just my feeling. I, like I say, I know we, we don't have any control over this, but it really ticks me off that our governor couldn't think of that common sense approach to, well, maybe we can give you folks an option as to whether you want to meet in person or continue on with Zoom. That's just my thought, thank you so much.
Thank you, Director Vice President Gray.
I just wanted to comment, though, on that. It wasn't the governor that is making us go back to open meetings. It's the law, it's the Brown Act, existing law. The legislature would have to change the law. It's not the governor was, his emergency declaration was, it was a respite from the, from the law that was in effect before and now is in effect afterwards. So we don't really, it's not, it's not the governor's fault. In fact, I would say it's better these backing off and letting the legislature.
I appreciate you clarifying that because the governor gets beat up for things that he isn't responsible for, so my apologies for that. The rest of my statement stands, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you look like you had something to say.
I'm just ready to take roll call vote.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Can we go ahead and have a roll call vote to accept the consent agenda?
Vice President Gray.
Aye.
Director Scott.
Aye.
Director Thomas.
Aye.
Director Farmer.
Aye.
President Dean.
Aye. Okay, we're moving on to discussion and consideration to adopt the strategic plan update. Mr. D'Enzo.
Yes, item seven A is discussion and consideration to adopt the strategic plan. Staff recommends that the Board of Directors discuss and consider adopting the district strategic plan update. I want to note a couple of things, though, on the, on page ninety-six and page ninety-seven, the mission statement and the three-year goals. It was commented to me that the, you know, it said under the mission statement that it said January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. It seemed to indicate that this was discussed in January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, when it was June of two thousand and twenty-two, which we could, we could change that date so to, to let everyone know. And same thing with on page ninety-seven, under three-year goals. The three-year goals were not discussed in the, in the January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. So we could also adjust that and change those dates to June of two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you, and yes, the board revised and adopted both the mission statement and the three-year goals in June of two thousand and twenty-two to run for the three-year period through two thousand and twenty-five. Thank you. And, and these were approved and adopted by the board August eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Okay. So let's go ahead and.
I can make a motion, actually, that's what I have.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Madam President, the, the pages on ninety-eight, ninety-nine through one hundred and four, th- this is not the updated strategic plan.
It is. It is what we did in January.
No, it's not. This right here is.
Some of the things carried on from, from before, and then there were new things that we added. What we did in January is thanks to the new eyes looking on our strategic plan, it was determined that what we had previously on there were objectives were actually actions to, and so we created a separate line and bold that were the objectives and then bullet points underneath that were the actions. There were a few things on these lists that are things that were already done, and those things are still on there. And we had talked briefly of, of creating some kind of a historical spreadsheet to keep track of those moving forward so they can be removed from the grids. But these are, not everything is in red that we changed, but all of these things are things that we went thoroughly over in, in the January strategic plan. I did review the whole thing for accuracy. Do you have a question on any one of those items?
Um, well, the, the one that we, we went over in, in January, what page is it on? It was in the minutes.
Oh, the minute, yeah, okay. So the actual final product is what is in this agenda item? Starting on page ninety-eight.
Okay, so you took everything from, that we talked about, and it's here?
Yes. Everything that we discussed and, and agreed on is in here, starting on page ninety-eight.
If I'm not mistaken.
Quick question, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My apologies for not being recognized by the president. If I'm not mistaken, it's these items here, starting on page ninety-eight, that both Director Scott and Director Thomas addressed. And these are the changes that they wish to incorporate. And I'm going to thank them, by the way, for taking the initiative and doing this. But aren't these, like I say, starting on page ninety-eight, doesn't this reflect some of the comments and updates? Not just so much updates, but further defining what we wanted?
Yes.
Isn't that what this is?
To the best of my recollection, also.
Okay.
I just want.
Yeah, and, and thanks for doing it.
Yes, no, I, I appreciate the new eyes on this and the, and the input on how we could better do this because what we had before under the what were an action item, and what we really needed was an objective there to accomplish the goal. And then the action items are bullet points underneath there. There's no change on the things that were already notated as being done. And that's why I was saying that it would be helpful to have a historical document that we could update every six months so that those things that are done can be kept on a separate sheet.
Yeah, my, my thought was that rather than having it in black, because it got changed, that it should be in red.
That's probably an oversight, pardon me for just interrupting, but anything where it said in bold print followed by something below it that's dotted, those are all things that you, that you folks suggested. And some of it is in red, some of it is in black.
Yeah.
But that's how we can tell the difference.
Okay, please wait to be recognized. We're, we're starting to get a lot of cross-talk here.
No, um.
Director Scott?
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I just thought it was going to be in red because it got changed.
Well, we can't, yeah, we didn't read, we didn't type the whole thing in red. Most of it is the when.
Okay.
That we changed.
Okay.
Some of these things on here were actually already objectives, but they got reworded, so we had a separate objective followed by bullet points that are the actions. But there are things that may have been previously on there before. So what was changed was the date and the, and that it was revised, when it was revised. Okay, Vice President Gray, you had your hand up.
I, I, before I make a motion, I, I want to point out, I think this is true. If you can, you can watch, you can look at the minutes from that meeting and see all, how this, all this was developed. And I think they should match. The end product here that we're voting on now should match what you see emerging through all the corrections on the minutes.
So you want everything in red?
No.
Okay.
I'm just saying, if you want to double-check, make sure this is what was, what was done at the meeting, you can go back to the minutes, and I think it, they match up. See, I, I, yeah, I'd move, I'd move if it's okay, unless it's public comment.
Okay, is there any public comment on the strategic plan? I think there was, but I think Ms. Heinrichs left. Do we have any other public comment on the strategic plan?
I do not.
Okay, did you want to make a?
Yeah, I move that we adopt.
I will second that motion.
Pardon me?
Well, I will second.
Yeah, she hasn't made it yet.
I said a specific, specific language. Adopt the district strategic plan update with two corrections or revisions. Under CCSD Strategic Planning Workshop, delete January thirty-first, twenty, thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three and add adopted August eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. And do the same thing under Strategic, CCSD Strategic Planning Workshop. And on the second page, under the over-three-year goals, put takeaway January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three and add August eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two as the adoption date.
Okay. Director Thomas?
I will second the motion.
Okay, did you have another comment, Mr. Farmer, or are you just waiting for the vote?
I do have a comment.
Okay.
It would seem to me, with regard to setting goals and objectives, that, and I think Director Thomas alluded to this at the last meeting. Those should like be done at the beginning of the year. It, it just, I don't know what to say, it seems like logical or common sense. You, you don't set goals and objectives like in the middle of a year. It's just a feeling, I mean, it may work for the fiscal year, but I think with regard to something like this, it should be discussed at the beginning of the year, like our new resolutions for the coming year, so to speak. That's ju- just my feeling. I realize that this process is already kind of set in its way it's being done, but maybe there's something we could kind of reconsider when these, when this, when this is addressed. That's just my feeling, thank you.
Okay, I think we were going to discuss our process at a future meeting, and we may want to change this to once a year. I don't think it's set in stone unless we have a resolution that had to be twice a year. But I, I can see that there's some ways that we can improve this, and I was planning on having a meeting to discuss this. In the meantime, we have a motion in a second on the floor.
Vice President Gray.
Aye.
Director Thomas.
Aye.
Director Scott.
Aye.
Director Farmer.
Aye.
President Dean.
Aye. Moving on, let's see, we already did seven B. So moving on to regular business agenda item seven C. Would you like to introduce this item? General Manager D'Enzo.
Yes, agenda item number seven C is a discussion to receive and file the second quarter budget report for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three and adopt resolution twelve dash two thousand and twenty-three amending the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three budget. So the, it is recommended that the Board of Directors discuss and receive and file this. And if there's any comment from, from Finance Manager Denise Fritz.
Ms. Fritz?
Thank you, President Dean. So before you, an agenda item number seven C is the second quarter report. This report went before the Finance Committee, which reviewed and approved with a four-to-one vote the second quarter budget report. So during the second quarter of two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, there was an approved budget adjustment for the purchase of a water for a truck for the Water Department, which is included in this report. As General Manager D'Enzo said, there's a resolution here. There's another budget adjustment that we're being asked, that we're asking for you to approve. And that budget adjustment is outlined here in the staff report, and it's memorializing the Cambria Community Council's contribution to skate park expenditures that was not memorialized in the budget. So that's what's outlined here in this report for the twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and six dollars. So this report covers the period from July first, two thousand and twenty-two to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. And as most of you know, the Cambria Community Service District has our general fund, which includes our fire facility resources, PROS, and administrative department budgets. Our revenues are a little less than expenditures for this quarter, and that is because of how we've been receiving our property taxes. And we have started receiving some more substantial property taxes in January. So you'll be seeing those in the third quarter report. For the wastewater funds, where the PG&E IGA projects are getting underway. And so you should anticipate, I know everyone's anxious to start seeing expenditures from those projects, and you will start to see those in the third quarter report. So there's none reflected in here, but they, but we are getting started. And I wanted to point out one other thing. This was reported in the first quarter report, and there was some discussion at the Finance Committee regarding this. But if you remember, there was some reserve for encumbrances where we, we do the carry forward of projects and that we had a software glitch where the description on those were all the same for, for all of them. So I've somewhat outlined that here in the staff report describing what the issue was. And we said that we would, working with the Tyler system, the solution is not, not a great one, but I had to go in and reverse all of those entries with the same description and then add in a new line with the new description. So I, just for an example, on page one nineteen, it's for the Fire Department. If you go down to the bottom of that page, you'll see where there's an adjustment for a credit of forty thousand dollars with the fuel station computer replacement description. And I reversed that out with the same description. And then there was another line that is detailing out truly what that forty thousand dollar budget adjustment was for, which was the Zoll's X-series EKG machine. So you'll see that throughout the report in each department when it comes to those project carry forward amounts. And now we know better, and so for next year, we'll know how to log those, those entries so we won't have the same problem. And I'm available for any questions that anyone may have.
Okay, doing, oh, Director Scott?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So I think this is a software thing, too, but where it says variance favorable or unfavorable in paren, parentheses. So when there's a negative there, does that, is that in place of the parentheses?
Are you looking at page one sixteen?
Oh, the whole.
All of them, yeah, all of them.
Yeah, it's on every page.
Oh, yeah, I see a minus sign, we're used to see parentheses.
Right, and, and, and I think that's confusing if you have the parentheses at the top of the heading. I, I had to kind of take a look at it and decide, oh, that must be, it should be parentheses, but it's not. So I don't know if there's a way to even change it. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. So I'll, I'll have to look into that, why it's not using the parentheses.
Yeah. Okay.
And it is probably a report, you know, it is a canned report within the system.
Yeah, that's what I thought, thank you.
Okay, Vice President Gray?
Yeah, thank you, I, thank you, Ms. Fritz, for the, for the presentation, also for your, on the staff report explaining the problem. This is what was, a lot of the discussion of the Finance Committee was about that. And I, and I, I should further note that it is, it is possible to get custom, more customized reports from, and I think you can confirm this for me, more customized reports from Tyler and Code, which might solve some of the issues with, you know, how they appear and the clearness, the clarity of the, of the information. And it's some money involved, but it is something we could consider in, in the next budget, adding a little bit to the, to this budget, to, and it's not that much money, to make the, some of the presentations a little more lucid.
Anybody else? Do we have any public comment?
I do not.
Does anyone in the audience wish to speak? I see hands over mouths, so that's a no. Do we have a motion to, to receive and file the second quarter budget report? And adopt the resolution twelve dash two thousand and twenty-three amending the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three budget?
I, I saw a move that we adopt the second quarter budget report for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three and adopt resolution twelve dash two thousand and twenty-three.
I second it after you've done all the hard work of reading it out.
We have a motion in a second, may we have a roll call, please?
Director Thomas?
Aye.
Vice President Gray.
Aye.
Director Scott.
Aye.
Director Farmer.
Aye.
President Dean.
Aye. Okay. Moving on, discussion and consideration to fill the vacancies on the Finance Committee and PROS Commission alternate positions. Do you want to introduce this, Mr. D'Enzo?
Yes, agenda number seven D. In, in essence, the staff would recommend that the Board of Directors consider appointing Amy Wyatt to fill the vacancy on the Finance Committee. I believe that was the action.
And the PROS? And the PROS Commission.
And, and PROS Commission alternate position. So, yeah.
Okay, and I did check with legal counsel to make sure that she could serve on both committees, since there wants a commission and wants a standing committee. So do we have any questions from the staff on, on board on this?
Just, just a comment, if it's appropriate.
Go ahead.
As, as Chair of the Finance Committee, I, I talked to Amy Wyatt, interviewed her. She's, she's a very, very accomplished person with a long background in business, travel agencies, and she does, and she now manages the Burton Street Inn, which her sister, Ann Wyatt, managed for many years. And so she's a very capable person, I'm happy to have her on the committee.
Thank you. Director Scott? Okay.
Aye. Oh.
Director Farmer?
I just wanted to say I've known Amy and her sister Ann for, for many, many years, and this will be a welcome addition, her presence will be a welcome addition on, on both the committee and the commission, thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Oh, I just wanted to ask, is Amy Wyatt on Zoom so that we can thank her properly?
She's, she's not, she's not available.
I believe she's cross-country skiing.
Cross-country skiing, yes, good for her. Have a good time.
Did we have any public comment?
I do not.
Nope, nope, okay, we need a motion.
I'm willing to, we appoint Amy Wyatt to the, a, the, a member, a, a member of, to be a member of the Finance Committee and an alternate on the PROS Commission.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, a second, yeah.
Okay, we have a roll call vote, please.
Vice President Gray.
Aye.
Director Farmer.
Aye.
Director Thomas.
Aye.
Director Scott.
Aye.
President Dean.
Aye, so we have five eyes. Okay. Moving on to future agenda items. Does anybody have any future agenda items?
Yes, I do, and I think it's interesting, we have five eyes, I only have four. So I'm going to have to figure something out here, but for a future agenda item, I would like, and this is following up on a, on a motion, and I couldn't say it. Having trouble getting words out of my brain because I can't find them in my brain. But recently, an action was made by the Policy Committee to forward the adoption of a district code of ethics policy to the board. So I'm just going to suggest that the board discuss and consider adopting the district code of ethics policy.
Okay, are you going to be bringing the District Code of Ethics in, for an agenda packet?
I will.
Okay. Anyone else? Vice President Gray?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, Director Thomas.
Yeah. You know, after the discussion about the, the Marine Terrace Trail and the work that, that the Facilities and Resource Manager is planning, I was reflecting that it might be good for us to discuss what it's that we want to upgrade, the, the Marine Terrace Trail slash emergency access road that, if we put down some rock, it's, I've been, I've been on that trail for, for years now, and it'll, it'll wash away unless we do some better drainage. So I could see some discussion about to what extent and whether we want to do some upgrades on, on that very important, you know, road.
Okay, Director Scott?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This is in response to something that Director Thomas spoke of earlier, and I think it's something that we should look at down the road, not right away, once we get a general manager, but discussing the org chart titles, I think would be a really good discussion.
Okay.
That actually, I'm sorry, just.
Go ahead.
I don't want to chime in, but that is actually something that we, it's part of the budget, the org chart. So we actually should take that up, we could take that up as part of our budget deliberation.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be good.
And I agree with, I agree with Director Thomas on the, the fire road or the escape, the evacuation route, I want to call it. It, it does seem to need some drainage because it, it gets gully, it gets gullied by the water flowing across it, and it could use some, maybe some French drains and culverts along the way. That might be a good, good investment.
Okay, I think we have two minutes left. If any members of the public have a future agenda item that they would like to see us discuss? No? Okay, does anyone have any objection to adjourned the meeting? No? Okay. It is just about four thirty, the meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody.